You're watching Cable Two.
Good evening and welcome to the special called Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools Board of Education Meeting. I am Deanna Kaplan, Board Chair. I appreciate your attendance here tonight, and I say good evening also to our viewers on Cable Two. Please rise as we start the meeting with a pledge of allegiance and remain standing as you are able for the invocation given by Board Member Susan Miller.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our inspirational quote for tonight is by Brooke Hampton, and this was sent to me by Michelle Lewis, who is a first-grade teacher at Cash Elementary. Speak to your children as if they are the wisest, kindest, most beautiful, and magical humans on earth. For what they believe is what they will become. We will now have a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Our first order of business tonight is the agenda review. Do I have a motion to amend the agenda to add the discussion item EC Service Delivery Overview, which is a continuation from our morning workshop? Do I have a motion?
So move.
So I have a motion by Board Member Kuhn, a second by Board Member Miller. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Thank you. That motion passes unanimously. So at this time, we are going to hear public comments on the agenda items only. We want everyone's voices heard, and because of the large number of individuals who have signed up and are continuing to sign up to speak, I will be calling groups of ten speakers at a time to line up. You will each have one minute to speak with no exceptions to extending the time. The protocols that we have in place for public comments are to ensure orderly and efficient board meetings. Pursuant to the district's stability policy 1170, the board does not tolerate disorderly conduct or disorderly or disrespectful behavior. Please direct your comments only to me as Board Chair and not to anyone in the audience. We cannot talk about sensitive and private student or personnel information in this public setting. When you come to the podium, please state your name and the agenda item that you would like to speak on. I am going to call your name, hope I pronounce everybody correctly, and assign a number, and so you will know each ten sets of individuals that I call to come up in lineup. So the first is Sadie Montoya, second Missy Minokian, thank you, third Emily Folder, fourth Jai Ruiz, fifth Tiffany Smith, six Ladima Gore, seven Kathy Kibbough, eight Frankie Santoro, nine Marty Stanley, and ten Emily Harrison. If the ten of you all could start lining up. Thank you. You may start.
Sadie Montoya, I'm here to talk about the budget cuts. I'll try my best to keep it under a minute. I am a nurse practitioner and a mother of two who go to the school system. I've been up here before. My understanding now is that we now owe over forty million due to several years of negligence and mismanagement. I feel like the school board is overlooking their constituents, people who've come up here with ideas to change, to help things, and instead of looking at your top earners, your administration to make cuts, our children and our staff are paying for negligence that happened on your watch. That is not their responsibility. Our kids are paying for it. I'm asking you to do the right thing, to look elsewhere, to reach out to your community members, form a board of them, get ideas. Do not cut our staff. Do not make my children pay. Order please. Order please. Thank you.
Next, Missy.
Missy Minokian, I'm here to talk for teachers, parents, workers, community. I'm here because the district is drowning in debt while students, educators, and families are paying the price for reckless decisions made at the top and not knowing the true financial status in every decision. Let's be clear, the debt did not just happen. Someone signed off on it, someone ignored the warning signs, and someone put politics and pet projects ahead of fiscal responsibility and did not do their due diligence per their job role, and now our children's education and educators' livelihoods are on the chopping block. Every dollar wasted on debt service is stolen from classrooms, from teachers, from programs that actually change kids' lives. Our kids didn't create it, our teachers didn't create it, our admin did not create it, the board created this. And now you know that you're balancing the books on the backs of these educators and staff and children who suffer and are losing stability, trust, and support where they should find their heaven in a place called school. This leadership-
I'm sorry, your time is up.
Sorry?
Emily? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Emily Fulthorne, and I made the decision eight years ago to drive every day an hour and a half each way with my young son because I believed in this school system. We moved during COVID because of my faith in our school system and knowing that at that time it was the best for me as well as for my son and his education. I'm disappointed that we are not trying to find other options for cuts. The staff that is dire for our students' growth and well-being is not the only answer. All schools have been cut, and we are working to stay afloat. We need to look at the big picture and how those that had no part in creating this deficit are being punished. In the end, the children's and all of us that are a part of the school system's futures are being sacrificed. There must be better options.
Yes, next, Mr. Lewis.
Hi, I'm Jase. I'd like to name some very important people. Ms. Angel, Ms. Dow, Mr. Fanning, Ms. De Souza, Ms. McGregor, Ms. Tawley, Ms. King, Ms. Hayes, Mr. Coulson, Ms. Barr, Ms. Wilson Moore, Mr. Sidney, Ms. Briggs, Mr. Jones, Mr. Joyner, Mr. Broadway, Ms. Francis, Mr. Covington, Ms. Ray Vines, Ms. Hall, Ms. Zepak, Ms. Campbell, Ms. Clary, Ms. Turner, Mr. Myers, and Ms. Patterson. These are not just names, these are people who have and are still making a huge difference. I would not be the person I am today without all of the time and support they gave me. Find another way to balance the budget.
Please hold your applause. Tiffany?
I am Ms. Smith. We are slashing EC resources. We set our students up for academic regression they may never fully overcome. We are not only harming today's learners, we're endangering the future of every student who will never get to seek those EC supports. Academic regression leads to lower graduation rates and reduction of post-secondary opportunities. Unmet emotional needs fuel anxiety, depression, and behavioral crisis. Further cohorts will lack the early intervention crisis to long-term successes. Okay, so also, let's go into the impact on teachers and the families. Our educators pour out heart and soul into the classroom, and reducing the EC funding drives the turnover and the burnout on those teachers. And in doing that as well, I would like to say I'm a former EC student of Winston-Salem Forsyth County School, and I graduated from RJ Reynolds High School. I'm here today to let you know we need our EC teachers.
Folder, please, please hold your applause. Next, Ms. Gore.
All right, my name is Ladima Gore, and I have been teaching for eighteen years here in Winston-Salem. Teachers didn't get us into this situation, this crisis. The school district leadership, along with your poor decision-making, got us into what we're dealing with today. Unfortunately, you aren't having to work under the daily consequences for this mess. The children will be paying the consequences. Getting out from under the hole we're in won't be painless. However, the families and children should have as minimal impact as possible. I teach at Meadowlock Elementary, the biggest elementary school in the school district. Katie Presko, our vice principal, maintains behavioral norms in our school, which have become more and more challenging. Katie Presko has been proposed to be cut from our school. The children know her, our families know her, they know what to expect from her, and we know what we're losing, that losing her would do to our children and the success of our school. Making sweeping cuts rather than using careful consideration is not the answer.
My name is Kathy Keber, and I'm here today representing Meadowlock Elementary as a teacher and a parent. You've now heard from so many of my colleagues that we are passionately opposing this reduction in force. The portrait of a North Carolina graduate asks us to put forth adults into this world with the skills to navigate challenging situations. And this is certainly a challenging situation. But how does this proposal measure up? Adaptability. Does this proposal balance diverse viewpoints and beliefs to reach a workable solution? From our viewpoint, this solution is not workable. Empathy. Does eliminating positions a week after school has already started demonstrate understanding, sensitivity, concern, and respect, and personal responsibility? Does this proposal honor the commitments that you made to the children, families, and staff members of this district?
Our students are what matter in all this, bottom line. Every school-based position is valuable, from assistant principal to ECTA and everyone in between, and should be the very last option, the very last option when considering making cuts. Remember, we must do what's best for students, and you all ran on that. Instead, I urge you to vote against the RIF tonight and explore other options. Rather respectfully, over the next week, every single employee at central office should be evaluated when it comes to the level of impact on student success. From administrative assistants to our six-figure area superintendents, student success should be the primary purpose of any role in this district, and a level of accountability should take place. If you decide to vote yes to the proposed RIF, then be ready to face this truth. Catty Moore will be gone December 1st, but you will have to face the responsibility to pick up the pieces of every school community and attempt to make this district whole again. This will be a monumental task. I ask you to consider other options rather than cut school-based positions.
Marty Stanley?
Hi, I'm retired, so your decision will not affect me, but it will affect my daughter, who is an employee of this school system. First of all, I don't even understand why you were thinking about cutting EC staff that works directly with students. The jobs that these people do on a daily basis is unmeasurable by a dollar figure. Two, you're asking assistant principals on twelve or eleven months to be reduced to ten months. My question is, will the director of HR, the area superintendents, the COO, and many others reduce their compensation from twelve months to ten months?
Order, please. Please, order. Continue.
Another area is there is an assistant principal at Glenn where I've worked, and he relates so well to the Hispanic-Latino community, and none of that will be taken into consideration, and that is a shame. And Corporate Square, that building needs to go.
Your time is up. Your time is up, sir.
And the last thing, people have said it for many years, the people at Corporate Square don't know what's going on, and it is proven by this.
Emily Harris. Harrison, excuse me.
Good evening. My name is Emily Harrison. Tonight I am here to oppose the cutting of over three hundred positions within a school district that is already struggling with teachers being overworked, with no resources, especially EC. Why is this board making a decision at the end of the fifth day of school? The school year had just begun, you did not have enough data to start eliminating services. I am a mother of two students in the school system who are autistic, have IEPs, and are in the EC program. Our children thrive in these EC classroom settings. I have one child who's in a self-contained classroom and has significant difficulties that a larger classroom cannot address. My other child is high functioning, that goes to the EC classroom part of the day to receive services that he is required to receive. Right now, EC teachers have caseloads of seventeen, nineteen students that should only be at ten, and their class sizes are already over the allowable limit. This is already illegal. Ratio does not account into individual students and their circumstances. We are already losing too many qualified teachers. Cutting these positions is a disservice to the most valuable children in our schools. EC is already stretched too thin. The EC program is to help kids become successful, and you're taking away resources. Do not cut EC positions. Cuts result in noncompliance, which result in complaints to the state, and if my children's services are not met, you will see my name again.
I want to remind everyone that we do want to hear everybody's voice, and when you all clap and you disrupt their time, we're not able to hear them. And I know that they want to be heard. So, order please. All right, I'm going to call the next ten groups, and I want you to line up, please. Jill Evans, number one, Madeline Hughes, number two, Samuel McMillan, number three, Patty Gillenwater, number four, Linda Winikoff, number five, Marty Creach, number six, Nikhil Busalati, number seven, Jennifer Johnson, number eight, Maurice Jackson, number nine, and Colin Trivie, number ten.
My name is Jill Evans, and I'm an ECS teacher. Let's go back to when EC kids were housed in the boiler rooms or institutionalized, unseen and unheard. Public Law 94-142 came into existence in 1975, and it stated all students get a free and appropriate education. These people said, "We are not going to continue to treat our special students like animals who are hidden and kept out of sight." No, what is being proposed is not the same as that scenario, but it's still taken so many steps back from where all these grassroots stakeholders stood firm on what was best for these kids, and they made it happen. You will be spending more money from parents who will file for due process than cutting EC staff. Now, let's fast forward to 2025, where you agreed to a consulting company who we are paying way too much that we don't have. They come here with no vested interest in our county, let alone our EC population, and say you need to reduce EC staff. Students with autism, Down Syndrome, vision, hearing impaired, and so many other disabilities all in the same classroom with varying levels of needs, I cannot begin to imagine having more students on my caseload.
Your time is up. Thank you.
These are the students who are affected. These are these students who are affected.
Your time is up. Thank you. Madeline Hughes?
Good evening. My name is Madeline Hughes. I'm here to talk about the budget as it relates to the proposed consolidation of Cook Literacy Model School. I have proudly served as the school library media coordinator of Cook Literacy Model School for the last four years. I have watched our enrollment decline at Cook year after year, thanks in no small part to the revitalization of Cleveland Avenue Homes, where many of our now-former students resided. As buildings were torn down inside Cleveland, many of our families were displaced, and with a tremendous shortage of affordable housing here in Winston-Salem, many had to go elsewhere to find homes. The revitalization of Cleveland is a quintessential example of systems letting down the population they are trying to serve, and my plea to this district is that we do not let this closure become yet another example of that. If the board votes to close Cook Literacy Model School, I have several recommendations. Do not close it before the end of this school year. I hope that is not even under consideration. Appoint a transition team that consists of district and school-based staff. I have been part of the transition of the Elementary Virtual Academy to Cook Literacy Model School.
Thank you. Your time is up. Samuel McMillan?
Good evening. I'm Samuel McMillan. I'm assistant principal at Spies Elementary School. I come to you as a product of public education. I attended three different school systems throughout my childhood, and I've been honored to serve in three school systems as an educator. My family has served in public education for one hundred and eighty-seven years. Despite the barrage of attacks on public education, I have witnessed firsthand the positive impact it can have in this state and in Forsyth County. When I read the comment that it's positions, not people, in regards to the proposed action items, I was deeply saddened. Public education isn't the people business. As an assistant principal and a classroom teacher, I have poured my heart and soul into the people. I've seen children light up for the first time they read a book independently. I've helped staff deal with personal tragedy and grow professionally in their careers. I've answered every single phone call, text message, email from parents with praises, concerns, you name it. Seeing the draconian-level cuts that are proposed across this district and the impacts on the countless families and school communities, it is people. I have no idea whether tomorrow I'll receive an email confirming if my job exists, but I know some wonderful people will. Please vote no.
Good evening. I'm going to talk fast. So Dr. Moore has demonstrated to us what a great superintendent can do for our schools. It's my professional opinion as a search consultant that Summit is the firm that can bring you the best candidates to consider for this position. Investing in a search instead of an administrative process, which is what you get with the School Board Association, will be the best investment you can possibly make. It will more than pay for itself, and we think that we've got funds from the community to help defray that cost. A couple of points. Oh, good. So Summit had a very robust process that included multiple forums with the community and all stakeholders. They named students as stakeholders, which I thought was really good. They've conducted two searches in North Carolina. This means they understand our systems, but they're not hands-off. You're not supposed to ethically recruit out of a client. So the School Board Association has recruited for almost every county in this state, because Summit's only recruited for two. They can go to sitting superintendents in other communities and get the best one for us. Thank you.
Linda Winikoff.
Good evening. My name is Linda Winikoff, and I speak tonight with deep concern about the reduction in force being considered in order to present a balanced budget for the coming year. Behind every number are real people, students, teachers, staff, and families who will feel the weight of these cuts should they happen. What also troubles me is the silence of our local business community and philanthropic foundations during this time. At a time when our schools and employees are facing unprecedented challenges, particularly reduction in force, these voices have been absent, at least publicly. It is disappointing because our public schools are the backbone and heart of this community and are essential to the very workforce and economic future these companies and institutions need. I urge you as a board to actively reach out to the business community and local foundations, ask them to step forward publicly and tangibly, advocating for and supporting our schools so we have alternatives to balancing the budget rather than reduction of force. Balanced budgets may be a necessity, but silence from those with the ability to help is a choice.
Thank you. Marty Creach?
Thank you. The positive of this crisis is that you have unified our entire community together. Use it to your advantage. But if you have to go forward, please forego your monthly stipend and then fire the staff that went over budget. Then fire the rest of us if you desire. Let it go on record that I do not want any of this to happen to anyone. Our delegation has refused to help, but has also introduced a bill to split up our beloved district. The only option I have come up with to prevent this destruction is to move to substitute the current motion with one to rescind the reduction in force and pursue legal action against the state of North Carolina for funds owed to our district by court order. Sunday night, I wrote an email to the governor as a citizen pleading to declare a state of emergency for Forsyth County, North Carolina. That is the gravity of the situation our county finds itself in and the importance of this vote. We are in the final moments of calling ourselves a school district. It is time to fight back and demand the funds that are rightfully ours and our students'. Do you have the courage, strength, and will to do so? If we must go down, let's go down united. But together, we will win.
Thank you. Nikhil, order please. Nikhil Busalati?
Hi, I'm Nikhil Busalati, and I'm a graduate of Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools. I started my teaching career here in 2010, and I came back here in 2022 to start my career as an assistant principal at Northwest Middle School. I love my students, I love my staff, and I love my school. I know that additional cuts appear inevitable. I also know that the audit report found no malfeasance, just gross incompetence, but I would encourage you to check those receipts again. At a previous meeting, it was said that four and a half million went to retention bonuses for Tier Two and Tier Three schools. I never got that bonus. No one in my building ever got that bonus. So where is that four and a half million? I feel used by this district that vowed to support me, all of my AP colleagues, and our EC staff. We worked tirelessly to open our schools, only to hear the night before students returned that our jobs were on the line. Have you ever tried to find a public ed job in mid-August? This delay in relaying this information feels intentional.
Thank you.
That's it.
Hi, Jennifer Johnson. I come to you today as FAPA Vice President, and I also come to you as an assistant principal. I stand before you to oppose the proposed elimination of the assistant principals and the EC teachers and all the support staff. This dramatic reduction in school leadership represents a critical threat to the educational foundation of our children. Assistant principals are not expendable. We are the backbone of daily school operations. We manage discipline, supporting struggling students, coordinate safety protocols, and mentor new teachers. When we remove ourselves from these schools, we are not just cutting positions, we are dismantling the support systems that each school needs. We are, where are the priorities? I urge you to consider alternatives, nonessential projects, and also implementing a more gradual phase that looks at the attrition rather than mass terminations. Our assistant principals have dedicated their careers to these students. Don't abandon us now, and more importantly, don't abandon the students who depend on us every single day. Thank you.
Before we go to our next speaker, we have two cars that are blocking a fire lane, and they will be towed. One is a white Tesla, driver's license KMV-1385, and the other is a blue BMX, LFT-9755 is the license number. If you all can, please move your car. Thank you. Maurice?
Hi, my name is Maurice Jackson. I'm the president of FAPA. I am here this evening to express the deep concern regarding the timing and the proposed reduction in force of assistant principal positions. The decision comes in a moment when other opportunities to seek employment in other districts and counties are virtually nonexistent. At this point in the school year, those positions have already been filled, leaving us without the ability to fairly compete for other roles. I stand before you tonight on behalf of assistant principals across the district. The conversation about reduction in force has weighed heavily on our schools, and I want to take a few moments to emphasize the roles of assistant principals, not just important, but essential. We are the efficient because we wear many hats: instructional leaders, crisis managers, mentors, program solvers, IEP coordinators, and LEA coordinators. Every day, we handle countless issues quietly and effectively, presenting small problems from becoming large ones. The absence of the AP is felt immediately in the life of a school. Reducing these positions may save dollars in the short term, but it will cause far more for student outcome, teacher retention, and school safety in the long term. Thank you.
Good evening, Board Chair Kaplan, Vice Chair Bohannon, School Board Members, and Superintendent Moore. My name is Colin Trivie, and I'm the principal of Wiley Magnet Middle School. I'm also the president of the Forsyth Principals Association. I'm here tonight to express my concerns for the potential second round of RIFs we're facing as a district. As we all know, the hole that has been dug is deep, and getting out will require many difficult decisions. The potential RIF of some of our APs might help reduce the deficit. However, in the long term, I'm afraid that it will also create schools that are less safe and that will continue to struggle even more to move the needle with regards to student achievement. What makes all of this so hard is that the people whose lives are being most directly impacted by the cuts had nothing to do with how we got here. I do not have all the answers, but I would ask that you consider every other option before cutting any more school-based staff. The state has spoken and made it abundantly clear, they are not going to help us out. We are the infantry.
I'm going to call the next ten. I see that some have already started. So Harry Morley, number two is Kim Borger, number three Bridget Cradell, number four Logan Macon, number five Stephanie Wallace, number six Kwameka Shafir, number seven Robert Watkins, number eight Alan Daniel, number nine Zachary Harrison, and number ten Royzetta Coakley.
My name's Harry Morley.
My name is Harry Morley. I'm a 38-year veteran EC teacher, also running for 10th Congressional US House. I'm here to fight for EC teachers, the EC students. I'm here to fight for assistant principals, the support staff, which we need at this point. I'm also here, if you look at the $18 million, that's what we lost in voucher money here. I'm here to call out the people who brought you the vouchers, Mr. Lambeth and Mr. Zager. He voted for those and he broke the break off the cap of $50,000 and that led to this. He is not supporting the people who work here at Forsyth County Schools, the third-largest employer in Forsyth County. He's not supporting his parents, he's not supporting teachers, he's not supporting us as a team. And they also were the ones who brought us the underfunded public education with the Leandro case, which they owe us a lot more money than $50 million. So what I'm saying is, we need to call them on that. And this is ridiculous. This is what happens, man. And we need to stand up for them and that's why I'm fighting for all these people. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Ms. Kim. I am an EC teacher here in Forsyth County. I've been teaching for over 20 years in this and tonight I am a voice of my students and my class. I speak up to say that we cannot afford a decision that sacrifices legal compliance and learning for short-term budget relief. Decreasing EC teachers and other staff in this current moment will create consequences that cost the district more than they can save. The North Carolina Office of Exceptional Children enforces compliance and under IDEA, Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools must provide FAPE in the least restrictive environment, implement each IEP as written, review IEPs at least annually, and ensure progress, monitoring, and services are actually delivered. Reducing EC staff means missed minutes, especially design instruction, delayed evaluation, fewer behavior supports, and slower IEP updates. This is exactly the opposite of IDEA and LEA mandates.
Bridget Credell.
My name is Bridget Credell. I'm here because I fear we're losing our EC teachers and our amazing assistant principal, Katie Presco. She's poured her heart and soul into our school every day. She makes connections with the students, the staff, and the parents, and these connections are not replaceable. We are not interchangeable. You cannot simply drop a different AP into our school and have the same results. Teachers are not listened to, so we've appealed to our parents and they're here to fight. And now we need you to fight for us. I know the board members are saddened and sickened by this crisis, but we don't need your sadness because that doesn't do any of us any good. We need you to stand up and fight for us. We need you to say that these proposed cuts are not acceptable and fight just like we are doing. Fight to find ways to generate funds, knock on doors, ask businesses to donate or sponsor, sell advertisements. Maybe we can have the Atrium Career Center or the Novant Football Field. Find a way to reallocate money for buildings to cover the deficit. Sell land buildings not being used, rent out unused spaces, close central office and use the space in empty classrooms. Think outside of the box and fight for us. It is your obligation to fight for us.
I served this district as an SEL and Restorative Practices coach for three years, and over those three years I proudly served over 30 schools and to all those people I'm truly grateful for my time with them. Every day when I walked into central office, I would see the district values on the elevator, but since I was a part of a rift earlier this year, those values ring hollow. I used what opportunities I had to advocate to district leaders on how to support our educators. When advocating and presenting data that showed suffering well before this point, this was sadly the question that I received the most. Logan, how do we make this look good? That negligent question is why we're in this position. And I had the honor of training hundreds of educators across this district, making amazing things happen through restorative practices throughout our district, but sadly, they were learning how to implement these skills in a far-from-restorative system. There is no justice or restoration to be seen currently for those who perpetrated the incompetence and negligence that brought us here. There has been no restoration for the many who already lost their jobs, and there likely won't be for the hundreds who could lose theirs. So my call is simply to change the mindset of this district. Whatever decisions are made moving forward, don't think any longer about your optics but how you make this right. Thank you.
Stephanie Wallace. Order please, Stephanie Wallace.
Good evening, Board. My name is Stephanie Wallace. I'm a 26-year veteran at East Forsyth High School. Shame on you. You forced me to give a kid a 50 who won't write his name on a piece of paper, but you're going to send people to the unemployment line with little to no notice who did nothing wrong. They show up every day, do with their jobs. Our EC teachers and IRPs are essential. They are essential to the staff, they are essential to the students, the SEL, all of the things that it takes to get these babies from kindergarten across that stage, they are essential. Shame on you for considering sending them to the unemployment line. We are the home of the innovation quarter. Get innovative. Call out businesses, call out people for donations, find creative tools. We tell our students to be portraits of graduate, to do creative thinking, critical thinking, to take personal responsibility. The people you're looking to cut, they're not personally responsible. You are. The former superintendent is, the former boards are. I teach the North Carolina Teacher Cadet Program. I have brought you hundreds of teachers and guidance counselors and administrators, growing my own right here in this county. What am I supposed to tell them if you throw us under the bus?
Order please. Order, order please. Kwameka Shafers.
Good evening. I understand we're facing a financial hurricane and the cuts may seem financially responsible. However, I want to express my deep concern for the proposed cuts of 300 to 350 employees and of all people, our exceptional learning instructors and assistant principals. These dedicated educators are crucial to our children's success, providing the specialized support that empowers them to thrive, mainly my children, my daughters, Angelique Wisdom Brifin and Giselle Dion Collins. Rushing into such a significant decision without allowing time to explore alternatives is not the best way. It's not the best way to deal with this. We need time to voice. We need time for our voices to be heard. We need time to reach out to other stakeholders in this community, like our city, because this is Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools, not just the county. We need the city, we need the county, and we need the state, and we need time to be able to explore those alternatives. While I could be sarcastic and suggest that you all resign, the truth of, the fact is, the primary 2026 is right around the corner. You have the opportunity to make the right choice or the wrong one.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Robert Watkins.
So, to see what's currently happening in this school system is disheartening, despicable, and shows a complete lack of transparency, leadership, and knowledge of how to run an organization, especially one that is public and whose primary focus is supposed to be on the children of this county. The secondary focus of this board is its employees. These employees, most of them teachers, who have gone to college to receive a degree in education, meaning they have taken out student loans for their education. Some of them have even pursued master's degrees, all in the hope of landing their dream job in the teaching profession. Unfortunately, due to incompetence and failed leadership, hundreds of those individuals will lose their jobs, lose their income, and have their dreams snatched from them. Let's be clear, you may be terminating positions, but you're firing human beings. Some of them have families, including children. These teachers, staff, and their families are now struggling to figure out how to pay for their basic needs, including housing, electricity, and food. To them, apology is not enough.
Alan Daniel.
Resign.
Order please.
Alan Daniel. I would first like to remind the board tonight that you do not work for Ms. Moore, you don't work for anybody sitting over here, they work for you. Mr. Watts made the comment this morning that we got to get this right. I don't know if you saw the documents that were discussed this morning before 8 o'clock, but they weren't on anywhere I could look at them. I haven't seen them yet. So, do you have, have you the information to make this decision tonight? No, you do not. I have put before you a copy of two documents. The first one is cuts to everybody that makes over $75,000, which I proposed the first week this thing was announced, that would save you $6.8 million with nobody losing their job. I've added to it something that I hate to do, but cuts for everybody that would earn from $65,000 to $75,000, a 2% pay cut. That would bring that total to $9 million. I've also given you a list of the raises 2022 to 2023 that exceed, in many cases, $20,000 to $30,000 raises. Thank you.
Zachary Harrison.
So my name is Zachary and I want to just to say this. If you guys really think you can kick our teachers out, you are a dead wall. And if you think that society is wrong, tell my mother here. Because if you think you can crumble down our schools every weekend, you are even wronger than me. And if society thinks that teachers are mean and rude, then people should be fired because of that. And if you think that people are rude because their child can't get their teachers to have teachers being with them, they're to send to jail because of all of that. And I don't think that people should get ruined because of their teachers and their And I don't know why people always hate them. Thank you.
Royzetta Copley.
Hello, I'm Royzetta here again. I just want to make a proposal that you all, please allow me to start doing a fundraiser campaign for the district. And maybe every 30 days after we see what comes in, then we revisit and see where we might need to make a change. I just want to help us get started going forward, and I really believe we have enough people here in Winston that can make this thing work where we don't have to do any cuts, because I want everybody to win. So I sent y'all another email this morning with the suggestion again of how we can do this, so I just need somebody to say yes. I'm also working on a grant, a million-dollar grant as well. All I just need is you all to just allow me to try to do what I can and I promise you I'll make a difference, okay? And also I want to let you all know, I know you're looking for a superintendent, but I think we have what we need right here in the house.
So I'm going to call the next 10. Heather Woodward, Saul Navarro, Teresa Bryant, Stuart Egan, Dakisha Reed, Laura Shelton, Teri Flag, Rachel Nagler, Amber Burleson, and Grace Aderby. Heather.
I'm Heather Woodward and I'm here to speak about the rift in the superintendent search firm. I'll skip the pleasantries since tonight is anything but a good evening. After days, weeks, months, and years, the absolute ineptitude of this board and its prior members, some of which have somehow snuck off to higher offices, has caught up with you. And when I say you, what I really mean is us, the greater Winston-Salem Forsyth County community. You wreaked absolute havoc on our district's finances during your reign, and now you stick here with all the audacity in the world with your eyes on reelection. The only thoughts in your mind should be how to take accountability for all the harm you are causing the future of our community and how to warn your resignation before you have the chance to do any further harm. In the coming days and weeks, some underpaid employees in the HR office will have to look 300 to 350 employees in their eyes and pass them tissues as they cry and wonder how they're going to feed their families. And you, you will be nowhere in sight. You who have caused this mess, you who hired an unqualified superintendent in the first place, who helped lead us down this path as you gave her continuous salary increases and bonuses, and you allowed her to get away with no consequences. Yet you have the nerve to sit here making decisions on who you'll allow to come in and mess it up next? The best thing you can do is resign.
Saul Navarro. Yes, you may begin. Please state your name and the budget item.
My name is Anonymous.
Sir, face forward to address the board, please. Sir. Sir, your time is up.
I have still time.
Okay, you have 21 seconds.
Elon, Wake, Winston-Salem State University, Wake Forest, Maryland, Emory, Delaware, Wake, University of Greensboro, the majority of this board is college-educated. Y'all are supposed to be smart. So what is it? Incompetence, bribery, or pure stupidity?
Time is up, please. Teresa Bryant.
Good evening, my name is Teresa Bryant. I'm here, of course, to speak tonight about the rift. At the end of last school year, you guys had no problem boasting about your new current strategic plan goals. The basic strategies you have managed only cut one month later. One standard I want to bring up is the investment priority number one: core instruction. In case you don't remember, I will remind you. It will allow us to provide resources, tools, interventions to better support students served through exceptional education and multi-language learners. Services and will allow us to continue to provide technology and other resources to support personalized learning. Everything you are doing right now is a direct contradiction to what it is you signed up for and want the rest of the county to believe in. Tonight, one of the slides directly from the auditor states, Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools is in a deep financial hole. Our schools need to be focused on student teaching. So you tell me where the people of central office are. They are not in the classrooms. And that's where we need them.
Stuart Egan.
Stuart Egan, West Forsyth High School. Listen to your teachers. You're hearing from those who have been here for the last seven years, a span which has seen a pandemic, four superintendents, three school boards, and four CFOs. Chances are that most educators, including myself, will outlast all of you and every other policy person. We have to be heard in real time because we have to confront the effects of this after you leave. You need to listen to those who are on the inside, part of the structure, part of the family, and foundational to any success that this school system has had. In a day and age when so much in this district has been outsourced, like financial services and a superintendent search, you cannot outsource the valid opinions and insights of the site-based educators. This is a right to work at will state that still holds on to a Jim Crow-era law that forbids collective bargaining. People must find ways to be heard and fight for a chance to fulfill their deserved status as being part of the discussion at the table instead of being in a menu item.
Dakisha Reed.
Hello, my name is Dakisha Reed. I am a parent of an EC student coming today from Moore Magnet Elementary. And I cannot talk to you about numbers, I'm not very good at remembering them. What I can tell you is a story. So my job as a parent is to protect my child. I did not think that I would need to protect her from people like this, okay? When my child goes to school, she is welcomed. She requires two extra adults to be with her, one is a one-on-one, one as an ASL interpreter. Please explain to me how it is fair, appropriate access to public education to rob her of the things that help her connect with her friends, her teachers who love her, the staff members around her. It is not appropriate or fair to take from the children who are the most vulnerable. I'm not quite sure how we came to that idea, and that was our first idea that we would solve this problem.
My name is Laura Shelton and I stand here this evening as a parent to EC children, three. More importantly, I stand before you as my children's voice. The EC resources and staff go beyond teaching our kids. They help our children with life skills, coping mechanisms, and the folks our children run to and love dearly. We don't have immediate family, so these folks are our community and our support. They have shown up for wins like when they spoke their first words, then sentences, they wrote their name for the first time, and even celebrations like my daughter's birthdays over the summer. They answer texts, they call when our kids are in distress, they are part of our family. Our EC children did not mismanage your funds, the teachers, TAs, assistant principals didn't mismanage your funds. Before granting early retirement, transfers, and paying bonuses, and hiring a consulting firm to make life decisions for those that have served you faithfully, you should have looked to those that did that for the last decade to make your numbers align. You should have done your due diligence as a board. Our EC children deserve an education, they deserve to follow their dreams, just as you guys had support to do.
My name is Teri Flag. I am a brand-new ELA teacher, a 12-year district parent of a high school senior, and a journalist who's covered education. But I'm speaking now only as a Forsyth County resident and a member of this community. This issue doesn't just impact EC families or the people whose jobs are on the line, it impacts everyone. Catty Moore recently stated that significant changes in leadership and considerable turn- Catty Moore recently stated that significant changes in leadership and considerable turnover contributed to systemic inefficiencies that led to the current crisis. The cuts as proposed will not only perpetuate those problems, but worsen them. The cuts may seem fair because they account for longevity and performance, but to impose this surgical reduction without considering the actual impact on each unique school or the fundamental relationships that APs and EC faculty have built there is anything but fair to the students or the people of the county. These students will be adults in the blink of an eye. Uphold your oath of office and don't keep making the same mistakes.
Thank you. Rachel?
My name's Rachel Nagle. I'm a proud EC teacher, and it's Nagle, by the way, Ms. Kaplan. I just want to go over some stats with you. In December of 2024, the current count of our EC students was 7,461. Imagine refusing 7,461 people shelter, food, safety. When you talk about doing these cuts, that's exactly what you're doing. These students have a legal right to a free and appropriate public education. If you cut EC, I hope you're ready for the lawsuits that are on your way. Tell me how that's saving money. Everyone in this room, please raise your hand if you know someone with a physical, emotional, intellectual, or learning disability. As you can see, you are not only impacting these students, you are impacting everyone. As you can see, you are only impacting them. When you, when you go to sleep at night, I hope you think about the non-verbal, I hope you think about the non-verbal student that is immobile. His favorite color is blue. He likes macaroni and cheese. I'll be done in a minute. No, I'll be done. No, no, no. Disrespectfully, do not run again. Do not run again.
Amber Burleson? Amber Burleson?
Grace Adderby from Old Town Elementary, and I am a regular, oh, budget, budget cut. You are making cuts in all the wrong places. I am a second grade teacher. Do you really expect me to truly handle and understand the needs of these kids with disabilities? And I have some in my classroom and has been very challenging for the last few years. I'm speaking for these young teachers. I'm sixty-three on my way out, so I'm talking about these younger teachers. I met with McManus on two occasions last year, and I questioned her about these bonuses that were given to sub-temporary bus drivers, cafeteria workers, janitors, I'm sorry, and custodians. They are not in the classroom for seven and a half hours with the kids without a duty-free lunch. I do not get lunch, like all of you, I'm sure do. Most of us don't get a duty-free lunch. We are in the cafeteria with the kids. It is a shame. We should be cutting these salaries that are over hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Amber Burleson is, Amber here?
Are you saying that's me?
Oh, I'm not. I'm Leslie May, but that's fine.
Okay, well, let me call them the next.
Of course. Oh, sure.
So, okay. So Leslie May, number one, Michelle Jordan, Jelisa Smallwood, Shane Thorpe, Tom Rodolovec, Alex Trillo, Stephanie Trillo, and Peter Antonazi, Meredith Hampshire, and Raleigh Gordon. Leslie?
Thank you. Good evening, Superintendent Moore, Chair Kaplan, Vice Chair Bohannon, and Board members. My name is Leslie Pollack May. I am an alumni of Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools. Go Mount Taber. My girls were educated in this system. They are now nineteen and sixteen. They have had so many extraordinary teachers that I will be eternally grateful for. You know who you are. I am a second grade teacher. When RIF was released Friday evening, here's what ran through my head as a single mom with two children. Am I going to lose my house? How will I pay my bills? How will I pay for college and worse? How will the girls get healthcare? Will we have enough to eat? These are the thoughts of thousands, excuse me, of hundreds, if not thousands, of hard-working employees, and these are the thoughts that are ruminating in their heads at this moment. I still have a limit. Exceptional children, these also are the most vulnerable children in our system. There's no way that the IEPs are going to be honored, and as somebody said before, I just think you should consider the lawsuits. Thank you very much.
Hello. So you all know me, and I've been here before, and you know that when I was here the last time, I said that I was retiring, which I did, because I knew that this is what was coming, and I was going to be one of those positions, right? But I'm here to talk just briefly about, I know everyone is angry, and everyone should be angry. But some people are directing their anger sometimes at the wrong people. What people really need to understand is that what happened here was that we were overstaffing, which is just ludicrous to me, because several of you have been at schools during this time period, and none of you could sit there and say that you ever felt like you were overstaffed. I know you didn't. I know you couldn't. I know some of, like, none of you could sit here and ever say that you felt like you were overstaffed, right? So when we're sitting here and we're looking at this, what we're really talking about is the underfunding of schools that have been going on for ten years or more. It's a hundred million dollars that's owed to our school system from Leandro, from the state. It's the eighteen million dollars that have taken, been taken out from our school system for vouchers. It's the ten million more that's been taken out for charter schools. So if we actually had us going up to the state and advocating for that, then maybe we would have the money that we actually needed, because they owe us money, not the other way around.
Hi. So all of you should have my resume and/or, you know, attachment soon, because I'm applying for the CFO role. Today's speech is also very much in honor of the Rodney Ellis, who was president of NCAE and worked diligently and so hard for kids. He would be ashamed. He would be so ashamed of what's going on here today. But I only got thirty seconds, so I'm gonna just ramble. It's funny, we talking about accounting, but nobody wants to take accountability. I can't remember the post I was gonna make, but leadership is taking accountability and constant growth. That has not been happening. It was clear from the Office of the State Auditor Report that nothing was happening that should have been. Everything that was pointed out, the seven findings and the additional assessments, was a role requirement, bullet point, responsibility of you or somebody in central office finance. They don't need a hundred thousand dollars for what? They want to do nothing on the clock?
Thank you.
My name is Shane Thrapp. I am a parent of two children. Go to Old Richmond Elementary. I run the largest ADHD parent support group on Facebook with over two hundred and twenty-five thousand members worldwide. I see every day the quality of teachers who are EC. The stories that these parents tell of how their teachers built their children up. I am the product of EC, not just in my childhood, but with my wife, who has taught me how to be a good man and a better father, and a person who can support other parents in their joys with living with their children with ADHD and autism and other special education needs. Y'all need to understand the importance of the decision that you're making. You are not going to just affect teachers. You're going to affect children. You're going to affect their children, because they're going to take this story and they're going to tell their children either how the school stood up for them or how they failed them.
Good evening. Mr. R here. I'm gonna have two simple asks of you all tonight. The first is to stiff the riff. And what I mean by that, vote against this terrible plan. It is not well thought out. It is rushed. Have the HR department done a deep dive into all the people that might be riffed and considered the consequences? Law of unintended effects will be at play. The second reason you should vote against this pla, plan, because it is immoral. How can you sit there and say an EC teacher ought to have a caseload of thirty to fifty? You can't say that with any honesty. How can you cut jobs at this point? This should have been done in June, not now. People set up their year based on promise of work. And my last ask for my peeps in overflow and my peeps here, make some noise. We will not be silenced.
Alex Trillo?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am the husband of an EC teacher and the father of a former EC student. If there's a budget deficit, it's because of the gross incompetence of this board, previous boards, and the superintendent who lived in Florida and got a travel stipend to have the privilege of working here and for our children. But today, you're set to hurt our children, our teachers, and their futures. There are other solutions available and ways to raise capital. I would recommend starting with the money that went to the Stevens Center and retirement benefits of the people who created this mess, like Tricia McManus, who you refuse to fire, the people who were in finance, who knew this was happening, and you refuse to fire and let go and are getting pensions. All of you who created this mess should be ashamed of yourselves for allowing this to happen. Those of you responsible should resign.
Time is up, please.
I've seen my property taxes go up, and I'm willing to pay more.
Your time is up, sir.
You should too.
Stephanie?
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Trillo. I teach EC resource K through twelve. Hands off our EC. Our most vulnerable students cannot be sacrificed to balance the budget. Today I met with my autism support specialist. She helped me navigate some tricky IEP goals, rushed through our meeting, and promised to come back tomorrow, because she doesn't even know she's going to have a job at the end of the month. She knows that this student, his gen ed teacher, and I need her to help him succeed. We both cried. These supports are crucial. We cannot serve students with diverse needs without experienced hive mind of the EC educators and specialists. Cutting these positions feels burnouts, worsens the teacher shortage, and exposes the district to lawsuits. Every furloughed person I spoke to over the summer was a reading specialist or an interventionist. The very roles research shows improve outcomes. More face-to-face time with skilled educators equals better results. Our students deserve better. Our educators deserves better. Our school deserves better. Hands off EC. Protect our kids. Protect our educators.
Peter Antonazi?
Good evening. Whether remaining debt from last year or the budget shortfall this year, the proposed solution is to use EC staff salaries as a bank account to make the system whole again. That plan makes zero sense. During the three-hour workshop this morning, Board Member Miller presented a smart alternative plan. It saves EC staff positions and solves two problems at once. School closures from low enrollment, and most importantly, the plan balances the budget and then some. I'll attempt to paraphrase the plans you proposed. Step one, immediately halt construction on Brunson Elementary. Step two, put that estimated twenty to thirty million dollar savings in Ashley Elementary. Makes sense, since there are both capital building projects that are going to be built a half mile apart. Step three, since the forty million dollars or so you currently have allocated to Ashley, is capital outlay funds. Make a request to the county commissioners to allow the use of those funds for debt. And don't tell me that cannot be done because the commissioners did that just last Thursday for three point eight million dollars of the same designated funds.
Thank you.
Step four, stiff the riff discussion tonight. The money is there to save every one of those jobs.
Yes, Meredith?
No, Riley.
Oh, Riley, okay. All right. Is Meredith Hampshire here? Oh, excuse me. Okay, Riley.
Hi. I'm going to start off with asking that each of you look at me. I am a sixteen-year-old. I go to Atkins High School. I came here in my school clothes. I have homework waiting for me at home. Yet I'm here because I am proud to have grown up in this community. Atkins is a STEM school, and we are extremely diverse. We are a unique school. But we require more paper. We require more different learning utensils, more different learning applications than most other schools in this county. Lately, my classmates and I have noticed cuts everywhere. And yes, we all know that there are cuts everywhere, but these freshmen coming in our school, they don't have Chromebooks. Teachers have one ream of paper for class. How are we supposed to learn if we don't have the correct applications to do so? These cuts aren't small inconveniences. They take directly away from the students, the people you are supposed to serve. It is appalling that the funding is being cut from these classrooms. When you cut programs and you cut teachers, you are cutting role models, you are cutting safe adults. I'll leave with you with this. If you are cutting supplies from classrooms, you aren't just cutting supplies, you're cutting futures.
Order, please. I'm gonna call the next ten names. Order, order. So the next ten names, Lisa Meninhart, Meredith Clark, Maria Buttner, Ashley Jones, Amy Matthews, Meredith Vaughn, Susan Kresovic, Jenny Easter, Eureka Felipe, and Latrinda Boyd Gordon. Lisa?
Thank you. My name is Lisa Meninhart, and I am a parent of two boys at Clemmons Elementary School. It is absolutely unacceptable that our board has chosen to balance this budget on the backs of our most vulnerable students. Every cut that you make to teachers and support staff is a cut to our children's future. You're only kicking the can down the road to another problem that someone else will have to solve, or maybe that is your plan. You allowed for this to happen. This happened under your watch. If you truly believe in putting our kids first, you will make a different decision. Let me be clear. Student-facing staff should not be cut. Let's start with the central office and the departments that made these mistakes. I want to acknowledge that lovely quote we started with this evening, but I want to amend it. I want you to speak to our children as if they are the wisest, kindest, most beautiful, and magical human beings on this earth, for that's what they will believe. You are sending that message with the decision you make this evening.
Meredith Clark? Meredith?
Hi. My daughter is Cara Clark. She goes to the Children's Center. She's in the fifth grade. She is in a wheelchair. She's nonverbal. She isn't able to raise her hands or her arms. One of my biggest concerns is that if we reduce the staff, we reduce the safety. She's already been hit and had her hair pulled, and these are just things that happen, and I understand that, and I, I don't blame anyone for that, but if we reduce teachers or teachers assistants, that's only going to get worse, and I will not feel good about her being at school. And these teachers are amazing. They, even though she's nonverbal and she can't use her hands, they pull things out of her. They are so loving and smart, and they know how to bring those abilities out. And not, not everybody sees that, but they see that. So I urge you to please keep those people intact. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Maria Zevly-Buttner. I'm an EC adaptive teacher at the Rance Middle School. And first, I would like to thank the three board members who responded to my multiple emails about this subject. I would also like to pose the question to the board. How are staff cuts student-centered? How can we Maslow and Bloom and be accountable when you are threatening to gut us? Thank you very much.
Ashley Jones?
Hello. I'm coming here today pretty much the image of a disheveled mom. I have three-year-old twin toddlers. Both of them have benefited from the EC programs in Forsyth County. Yes, both of them are in EC pre-K. Well, with slight amendment, the EC program, while it's been a great fit for my daughter at Kimberly Park Elementary, shout out Ms. Miller, shout out Ms. Davis. My son at the Children's Center needed more support, and he needed that more support with not just one teacher, but two teachers assistants. And looking at that evidence, I see the best in the EC program and also how much more the EC support needs not to be gutted the way that you guys are doing. NC is supposed to have a reserve of funding, and I don't understand why you guys can't and I don't understand why you guys can't communicate with Mo Green to get some of that funding to support the most vulnerable kids among us. Thank you very much.
Amy Matthews?
Since my emails have gone unanswered, I will share an abbreviated version of my email tonight. A reduction in force is not just a budget decision. It is a direct threat to our students and staff, and it will have lasting and harmful consequences. The deficit did not appear overnight, and it will not be solved overnight. Demanding that it be fixed in a single year when it took years to create is irresponsible. What is most troubling is that time and time again, this board has failed to listen to the voices of the community. We are the parents, we are the teachers, we are the taxpayers you represent, yet our concerns are dismissed. If you continue down this reckless path, know this. We will remember, we will hold you accountable, and we will vote you out. Our kids deserve better, our teachers deserve better, our community deserves better. It's time for the board to change course before the damage is permanent.
Meredith Vaughn?
Good evening. I'm here today both as a parent of a child in our school district, one of whom has cerebral palsy, and as an advocate for Little Lobbyist, a nonprofit group that advocates for the children with medical complexities and disabilities. I am deeply frustrated with the lack of transparency from this committee. To have gone this long without realizing our budget was that broken baffles me. The failure is not the teachers or support staff within the schools. It is most definitely not on the EC department. The failure is on the leadership. The failure is on you, all of you. The teachers and assistants that work in the EC department are amazing people. They look beyond the child's disability and see a whole child. They see the potential, and they work hard to ensure that child is included. Thank you.
Susan Kresovic?
Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools Board of Education. I wake up at 4:00 in the morning because I have the privilege and deep blessing to teach as an instructional assistant at Con Oak Elementary. My children, my students, are learning how to read and comprehend. They're learning how to decode. They're learning how to solve math problems. And they will have good-paying jobs someday. So please, keep our most precious valuable EC program intact. I finally found my purpose in life. Don't take my purpose away. Thank you.
Jenny Easter?
Good evening. I don't know what I could possibly say that I haven't already said to you, to my colleagues, or to our community. But it bears repeating, FCAE opposes every single one of these cuts, but especially the nearly 160 EC staff who serve our most vulnerable students. Their work cannot be absorbed or replaced. We all know the truth. Over the years, you have now been left with this situation. But the ultimate truth is that the state has not met its constitutional duty to fully fund our schools. And until they meet that duty, these choices are always going to be impossible, impossible, and on your shoulders. And a vote tonight would be premature. So just as your staff and community came together tonight to advocate to you, I urge you to turn and advocate for us. Build a legislative agenda that fights for the funding we need. Thank you.
Eureka?
Good evening, I am Eureka Felipe, parent of a Winston-Salem Forsyth County 2021 graduate and two current students in middle school at Haynes Magnet and Atkins High School, and also the 2023 Judy Mountjoy Volunteer of the Year and a current member of the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Parent Advisory Council. The proposed budget cuts jeopardize the quality of education for our students that they rely on. These cuts will directly impact vital classroom tools, student support systems, and the ability to retain qualified staff, all of which are essential for academic success. Reduced funding translates to larger class sizes, fewer opportunities in arts, music, extracurricular, and diminished support for the students with special needs. These consequences will fall hardest on our most vulnerable learners, deepening existing disparities. Our students deserve more. Every child in our county has the fundamental right to a well-funded, high-quality public education. Supporting our school is not a luxury, it's a necessity for well-being of our entire community. We call on district leaders and elected officials to put students first, safeguard critical resources, and work together to develop responsible solutions that protect the future of our children.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Latrinda Boyd Gordon?
Good afternoon to each and every one of you. I come on behalf of the students, not just EC students, but all students. Students, especially students with disabilities, need teachers and staff to remain present. We show up daily demonstrating our tenacity and integrity, all while teaching with fidelity to ensure all students are performing at their highest level of potential. A reduction in staff will resemble professional babysitting. We are more than childcare for students. All students, including those with disabilities, are required to access local and state exams. Their progress is monitored throughout the entire school year. Teachers are expected to teach grade-level standards to a diverse group in ensuring they have opportunists for the future. All we're asking is to do what you have to do to save as many jobs as you can because a lack of education means an increase in crime and poverty. Thank you.
Naisha McCaddie?
Good afternoon, my name is Naisha McCaddie, and I'm here on behalf of the pre-K department. 11 pre-K classrooms were already cut, and I'm in fear that it's going to be cut once again. I was surplus from Forest Park Elementary to Old Town, and I did this because I'm a mother and I have children that I have to feed each and every day. It's not a good feeling to know you go to bed at night and you wake up not knowing if you're going to have a job the next day and not knowing if you're going to be able to feed your children or if you're going to have to be displaced from your community. I'm asking each and every one of you to take the time to make sure that you're making the right decisions because some of you make really good money. But for us, we might be eating noodles, but you guys are probably eating steaks. And it's not fair. I work in a NC pre-K classroom, and we don't have Clorox to disinfect the tables and sanitize the tables. We do not have gloves to put on. We cannot make copies at the copy machine because there's only a limited resource of papers. So I'm asking you to do the right thing by our children.
Benjamin Gueselin?
Good evening, board members and neighbors. As a new Winston-Salem resident, I feel compelled to speak up for our most vulnerable students. My partner is a speech therapist in the district. She and her colleagues in the EC department are stretched beyond capacity, routinely forced to pay for basic school materials out of their own pockets. This critical staff gives it their all at their jobs every day. The sad reality is that the EC department barely has enough staff to keep the children safe, much less to give them the appropriate education that they are entitled to as Americans. Community is the foundation of learning. Communication is the core of community. Yet the proposed cuts, including to 100 EC positions, threaten to dismantle this basic support. These cuts will devastate the most marginalized students, those with disabilities from low-income families, those with no other support system to turn to who rely on EC services to access basic education. This is their fair and appropriate education that they are entitled to. I urge you to deny this resolution. Thank you.
David Lopez?
Hello, board members, my name is David Lopez. My first lady works for the school district. I would like to present a few facts to the board. Fact number one, I am a certified master instructor endorsed by the federal government. I am endorsed to teach a one-hour class to anyone at any time on any subject, provided I am given 72 hours of notice. I am an adult master instructor, thus being an expert on people. I am also formally borderline autistic, as told by my psychiatrist. And my professional opinion to you is that teachers that are not formally trained in special education, educational excellence, cannot and will not be able to provide the resources, tools, and educational prowess that these children need.
That concludes our public comments section. We are now moving to discussion items. We have three tonight. First, Cotty Moore, our interim superintendent, will give us a review of the Office of the State Auditor, investigative audit findings and recommendations.
Thank you, Chair Kaplan, board members. I'm going to wait for the presentation to come up. The NC Auditor's Office released the results of an investigatory audit into the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools finances on August 14th. We appreciate the thorough work that they engaged in to dig into our district's finances, and we appreciate the transparency that they had with us and we had with them to get to their audit findings. We agree with the auditor's findings and are acting to fix and address the problems through the recommendations and the findings that they have made. We are already strengthening internal controls, budgeting processes, succession planning. We know that the results of the audit are a crucial step in rebuilding public trust and ensuring strong stewardship of public dollars, which is our responsibility. Go. So always say, had full access to all of our financial systems. I think in one case, there was a financial system that closed at a certain time of night, and we had to figure out a way to keep it open so they could continue to do their work off-hours, which we did. They reviewed records going all the way back to 2017. They worked with our staff from April through June, a little bit into July as we were closing out the school year, and there were some things that took longer to get to them during year-end transition. The financial data that they reviewed from the district went all the way back to 2017. What the audit found? Well, they found that the financial challenges that we had experienced and that we faced did not develop overnight. This has been building for a while. Since 2017, you heard it earlier this evening, we've had multiple changes in leadership. We've had four CFOs, we've had four superintendents, three different school boards, and significant turnover and vacancies in both finance and HR. There were seven findings and one additional assessment within the report that they issued. Some of the things that they found that we've shared since May, staff levels were not reduced as student enrollment declined. Expenses were not scaled back when temporary COVID relief funds ended. Poor financial practices, not reconciling budgets, not budgeting for contract costs. All of those were factors. What the audit didn't find was that there was no malfeasance, no fraud, theft, no missing money. There's no referral for criminal investigation.
Order, please.
We spent more than we had. And it goes back to 2017. As we look at the findings, first, the first finding, the district failed to reduce its staffing despite a decrease in its student population. That decrease is over 3,000 students in the last few years. And if you, I think we'll, I don't know if that's on the next slide, but we'll wait. We've seen the slide, and we may see it again in just a minute, that shows what that looks like. In the response from the district, we acknowledge the issue. We're working to align staffing with NC DPI ratios and available funding. We've reduced by 474 FTE so far. This is across all areas of the organization, and are looking at another 300 to 350, and that's about the fiscal year '25-'26 deficit. I'll talk more about those two deficits in just a moment. So this is the slide that we've seen in a number of publications and places over the last few months that shows the, in blue, the average daily membership in the district and in black, the total positions in the district. Second finding, the district used temporary COVID-era funds to pay staff salaries and did not remove positions when the temporary aid ended. In the educational community, a lot of folks talked about this as the fiscal cliff from the ESAR funds. We acknowledge as well that this finding is correct, and we are working to align our staffing based on ratios from DPI and available funding. And this answer really is the same as finding number one. We need to make sure that our staffing aligns within our budgets. Finding number three, the district regularly approved purchase orders that exceeded its budgets and did not later revise these budgets. Again, we acknowledge the issue. One of the things that we shared with the auditor's office while they were here were some demonstrations and access to Tyler, which is the new enterprise resource system, the ERP, that we are implementing as of this year. That new ERP has safeguards and controls in place that will not allow us to exceed budgets. There's no one that can exceed a budget. And if it's not budgeted for, and you need something because it might come in over budget, then you have to transfer funds from another place that is budgeted, reduce that budget, and move the funds. So what we want to do here in our response is to conduct a review of all of our policies and procedures around how transfers can be made, how budgets are released, and also what comes to the board in terms of the thresholds that the board sees, and better explanations around being able to provide the assurances that those funds are there. We do want to also look at training that might be necessary. This came up in a couple of places. Turnover that happens both in schools and at central services. We have had a lot of training for Tyler. We will continue and need to do more training with Tyler. There are also some opportunities for other trainings that are available in the state of North Carolina that are specific to the multiple funding sources that North Carolina has and understanding the requirements and constraints of each. Finding number four, the district did not reconcile budgeted and actual revenue and expenditures in a timely manner. Again, the district acknowledges this issue. And beginning with this month, and we talked about this with the auditor's office as well, the finance committee will receive monthly budget-to-actual reports. Should have been doing those on a regular basis. We are reinstating that practice so that we can see what has been budgeted and what has been spent every month and keep track of it throughout the entire school year. Hill is also working with us in the new, the transition to the Tyler enterprisism to see what kinds of other reports can be useful and pulled out of the system that will help us with that. It will provide timely information and the board and the public more access to what we're doing on a monthly basis. Finding number five, the district did not reassess COVID-era bonus payments to ensure alignment with current financial conditions and fund availability. So we agree and acknowledge that this is an issue. There are no bonuses other than state allocated bonuses planned for fiscal year '25-'26. I think this finding was driven by and then looked backwards into a bonus that was paid in '24-'25 when we were in a budget deficit and paid the bonus because there was not awareness of the extent of that budget deficit. So in the future, obviously, we have to ensure that adequate funds are available regardless of the funding source before contemplating any bonuses to our teachers or employees of any kind. So I want to talk a little bit about the bonuses because there's been a lot of traction around a quote and a comment in the auditor's report about these bonuses. So historically, bonuses have always been used to support either employee recruitment or retention. The $75 million number that's floating around out there is prior to '24-'25. It's a couple of years in the middle of the COVID ESAR funds. And there were, in addition to bonuses that were driven by ESAR funds that were available, there are state bonuses that are included in that number as well. Our teachers in elementary school receive bonuses when their students perform at a certain level on their EOGs and growth and that sort of thing. Our principals receive bonuses when their schools exceed growth and those kinds of things. So those are state mandated bonuses. So a portion of what you saw there, there were principal and teacher performance bonuses based on student achievement, like I just mentioned. There were also some classified staff bonuses that were provided to match state-funded bonuses that were given to teachers and certified staff, but not to classified staff. So the district So the district chose to find funds to provide them for classified staff as well. There were bus driver attendance bonuses that were part of the budget during the crisis when we were, every district was short bus drivers. There was a holiday year-end appreciation bonus that I think may have been paid across more than one year. And then the COVID-era bonuses, and these are large amounts that were driven by federal funding that addressed staffing shortages, and in some cases, those were required by the state. There are no locally funded recommended bonuses in fiscal year 25-26, but there will be some state bonuses that will be paid out to staff based on state requirements later in the year. Just an example so you can see from '21-22 in particular. So in '21-22, these were all the bonuses that went out that year. You see several of them are ESAR-funded retention bonuses that went to every staff member in the district. You see certified staff, classified staff. The first ESAR bonus was $1,000 for all staff in the district, and then in February, and then again in April, there was a $1,500 bonus that went to all staff in the district. Those were all ESAR-funded during the pandemic. There was also a locally funded holiday bonus that went to all employees, and you see 700 certified, classified 500. And then there was another local-funded spring bonus for 700 for certified pay staff and then 500 again for classified staff. So in that year, we had district bonuses of $5,400 for all certified staff and $5,000 for all classified staff. That's district bonuses. In that same year, there were also state bonuses. There, the state-funded premium bonus for certified staff was $1,000, for classified staff, $1,000. There was a, a state-funded bonus that came out that was for any staff making less than $75,000. That was 500 for certified staff, 500 for classified staff. There was another state-funded teacher bonus that went to all teachers at $300. And then there was a state-funded COVID-training teacher bonus that went to eligible teachers at $1,000. So some certified pay staff received as much as $2,800 from the state that year in addition to the 5,400 they received from the district. And other classified staff received 5,000 from the district and up to an additional 1,500 from the state. Those are the numbers for one of the years that add up to the $75 million, district bonuses and state bonuses. And I just need to also say that none of those bonuses were any, in any part, a cause of a deficit. Those were funds that were available at that time. Finding number six, the district inappropriately uses suspense accounts, which are temporary holding accounts intended for transactions that could not be immediately classified. Understanding this is a little circular, so I'm going to attempt to explain it. We, as a district, do not put anything into a suspense account. The suspense account is a tool used by Sunpac, our financial system, and it is common, is a common tool, where an expense that comes in that is missing its coding or doesn't seem to be coded properly, doesn't say where it's supposed to go, gets put into a holding place, which is the suspense account. We don't put anything in suspense accounts. Sunpac puts things in suspense accounts. At some point, the proper code is identified, and so you go into the system, and then it's coded to the proper place and gets paid out. The gap here is that no one in the district is going into the Sunpac system to zero out suspense accounts once things go to the right place to be paid. We've been in communication with Sunpac on how, how that happens, what the timing, what the procedure for that is. It, that hasn't been done in 10 years. We can only go back 10 years. So for 10 years, items have been put into the suspense account but not taken out of the suspense account, but it's not funds, it's just entries that weren't balanced. So again, we are working with Sunpac to understand how to make sure we can zero out those balances. That is a hand process that you have to go through, and it's not clear as we move forward implementing Tyler, what that's going to look like. So finding number seven, the district failed to correct prior audit findings. No, that's the additional assessment. Finding number seven, the district did not adequately consider its contracts when creating its budget. The driver for this finding was from the '24-25 school year, the contract that was signed with ESS, the substitute management system, for around $12 million that was never put in the budget as an expense. So we, we were paying ESS based on their contract, but it was not in the budget. We currently owe, we currently owe ESS $6.1 million. So obviously, we acknowledge this issue as well. The new Tyler system will require that contracts be uploaded with purchase orders and with a line item that shows that the funding is there. One of the other recommendations from the auditor's office that we are implementing is to create a central repository of all contracts so that they, we have all of them in one place. Right now, they live in different places depending on who owns the contract. And so we are working with a number of folks to figure out what that repository is going to look like, and using the Tyler system that will require that you upload the contract will help in a number of fronts. It will help match the contracts with the POs and the obligations. It will also help when we turn over from one year to the next to be able to see the contracts that were in the year before and whether or not they need to continue the next year. We have run into some places at the end of this past school year where items came in for payment that might have had a purchase order but not a contract, or might have had a contract but not a purchase order. And so we need both in the system. And all contracts will be pre-audited as they are required to be. We are going to review our policies and procedures here as well on contract administration and know that we need to ensure that we are also providing staff training on those policies and procedures. The, the next piece is an additional assessment that was issued by the auditor's office. It's not a finding, but it is an assessment of the work they did with us during the time that they were with us. The district has failed to correct prior audit findings, which has contributed to poor accounting procedures, budgetary practices, and the fiscal year 2025 budget shortfall. Our response to the auditor's office was to, of course, give the context on the significant staff and leadership turnover since 2017, but we recognize and acknowledge this as well, that there need to be stronger internal processes. We need succession planning to address these systemic inefficiencies, and that we have a lack of controls that have persisted for over a decade. The Office of the State Auditor is also working at this same time and worked with our staff on that at this time, and will continue working with our staff on developing a public fiscal dashboard, public-facing dashboard, that, that people can look at and see what our resources are and how they are being spent. We are, there are several districts across the state of North Carolina that are collaborating with the Office of the State Auditor to get this dashboard up and running, and we will continue to engage with them on that. I think also, I talked about at the, earlier this week or last week, today's Tuesday, last week, about putting together an independent external audit committee. There's one other district in the state of North Carolina that does this. An external audit committee, the proposal we're looking at right now is three members of the committee that would, that would be one person that would be chosen by the board, one person that would be chosen by the county commissioners, one person that would be chosen by the superintendent's office. These would be external stakeholders in our community, not district employees, who have a financial background, interest, or experience in budgets so that they can work directly with our audit firm to make sure that the audit firm is, is doing what they're supposed to, to collaborate with the audit firm, make sure the audit firm is getting everything they need from staff in order to complete the audit on time, and to support the audit firm when they come and present to the board on the audit findings at having reviewed those as well as an external audit committee. I think it provides our stakeholders in our community a, an eye outside of the district that will help us, again, rebuild that trust and create a higher level of transparency around the work that happens every year with our district audit. I think we wanted to just sort of give you a timeline for each of the findings that were part of the district response as well. Every single thing that they have, they have put in a finding or the additional assessment, we have already started. Some of them will take longer to finish than others, and you'll see the timelines there. Even though we expect to complete the actions that are required by the recommendations of the audit by the end, I think those should all be 2026, by the way, not 2025. Yes? Yes? Okay.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, because, because obviously, we haven't done it yet. So, so those will be, those should be 2026. I think, you know, the, working with the auditor's office required a tremendous amount of time from our staff and from their staff, looking into all of the district finances and the, the other option, the other things that they looked at, the paper that we had to give them, the copies of things that they asked for, things that weren't in a system but were in a file somewhere that needed to be produced. They looked at a lot of stuff. In their appendix, if you look at that 20 or 30 pages of the appendix, they have lifted from our audits from, since 2017 until now, they lifted from those audits the findings and recommendations that the audit firm was providing the district when they completed their audit and made a report every fall. I'm putting together a chart of those audit findings, and I thank the auditor's office for doing that work for me and not making me read 10 years' worth of audit reports because what they did was they lifted every finding. And when you take a look at those findings from 2017 until now, you see that it spans the multiple CFOs, the multiple superintendents, the multiple boards, the multiple staff. Yes, that's one piece. But the other piece that you see is the number of times you see repeat finding in the audit. And, and when I'm envisioning, in order to make sure the public understands and the board understands what this looks like, is really a chart that lists the finding, lists the year, and has an X-box in it so you, everyone can see what's a repeat finding and how many times we had repeat findings. And I think we'll need to do a little bit of a primer and lesson on understanding what a weakness is, a significant weakness is, and a material weakness is, so that we understand what those mean as we're looking at an audit report this fall. I have already met with the auditor's office last week to talk about the timeline for providing that audit and having it ready for the board. At this point, we are hoping and expecting to have it ready in November for the board to review. So this is, this is a quote from Dave Bolick, the NC auditor, and there's a lot in this. I put this in here because it's, it's everything. "We dug ourselves into a deep financial hole. It's going to take real discipline to climb out of it. Our schools need to be focused on teaching students." Absolutely. "That becomes a lot more difficult when you're staring down a $46 million budget deficit. By shining a light on these problems, it are, our hope that a sense of urgency will develop in Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools to right the ship in a hurry." And I do want to say a couple of things because this audit is focused on our overall system and practices but driven by the deficit from '24-25. The deficit from '24-25 is money we owe. We owe vendors, we owe the county, we owe ourselves in a couple of departments where we took money from that department to pay other bills in other areas. So we owe bills to people, vendors, we owe the county, we owe ourselves. Those, that amount, which we've talked, you know, started at some amount, by the time I got here was 42 million, and now it's like 46-ish, 48. We, we need to make some revisions to that number because the, the amount that we owe the state was projected to be 18, then it was 13.7, and it's, it's now at 11.3. They have communicated with us that that is the amount that we owe. But we had projected 18 and then revised it to 13.7, it's now 11.3. We also, at, the reason the number has fluctuated is because we requested and got permission from the board to borrow money from Child Nutrition Services, which we have borrowed $2 million. There's another two to four that could be borrowed. We're trying not to do that because that's their fund balance. But we do owe Child Nutrition Services as well, is one of the vendors that we now owe to ourselves, $2 million. The, the funds to pay last year's debt are not related to the reductions that we're talking about this evening in the riff, and I think that's very important to understand. Those are two separate things. Earlier, I think I was, I think I made the comment in workshop this morning that if $20 million dropped out of the sky right now, I could use that $20 million to pay off some of the debt from last year, and it would not change the recommendation to reduce $20 million by this year. I could choose to use that $20 million that drops out of the sky to apply it to the $20 million we're basically requesting right now for the reduction in this year's budget. And then we wouldn't make these reductions, but we still owe last year, and we need to make these reductions anyway next year. Our enrollment has declined, and we have not adjusted our resources. That's finding one or two. So even though we understand that there's an amount owed that's for last year, we have to make changes this year to balance the budget. So I'll talk more about that when I get to the, with the budget presentation. The work of the audit from the NC auditor's office is not done. They will continue to monitor and have access to our systems definitely, at least during the course of this school year, but maybe even longer because we're, we're still working with them on that public-facing budget dashboard. So they plan to follow up with us as we are looking to implement these recommendations and check on our progress as well, and I, I welcome the opportunity to do that. This work cannot stop. Thank you.
Are there any questions? Yes. Vice Chair Bohannon?
So Madam Superintendent, I think you've covered, you talked a lot about finding one and finding, finding two, but I, I had a question starting with finding three regarding the approval of purchase orders. So is there, is, who, in terms of the position, is there, are there multiple positions that have the ability to approve purchase orders over budgeted amounts?
You mean in the past or now?
Both.
In the past, the override, the, the, you know, I call it the grand poobah button. The override for a budget would be the chief financial officer in consultation perhaps with the superintendent. The superintendent and the chief financial officer are the only folks that can really say, "If you don't have the budget, find it, do it anyway, take it from somewhere else", that sort of thing. Moving forward, that option does not exist in Tyler. Budgets are loaded based on available funds, budgets are allocated based on anticipated expenditures, you cannot exceed the budget. That button is off.
Okay, and so for finding four, though, the reconciliation of budgeted revenue, budgeted revenue to expenses, like that's not something that's like one particular person's responsibility. That's, that's like individual people based on like, like an account, like that's an accounting function. Am I correct or no?
Read it again, the finding again.
"The district did not reconcile budgeted and actual revenue and expenditures in a timely manner."
That is, that is printing the reports on a regular basis, a monthly basis, so you can track your spending during the course of the year to see whether or not it is within your budgeted amount. It allows you to see earlier if there is a problem. It allows you to see if you're underspending or overspending and make course corrections as you're going along. I think one of the issues that was a problem for the district was the extent of the financial deficit wasn't known till April, May, and you, by that time, you can't make reductions in the current year. There's not enough school year left to balance that budget for that year. There's not enough, and this district also ends the school year earlier, so you just, you didn't, you didn't, there was no way to recoup and find those funds. But if you know earlier in the year that your, that your budget to actuals are off or close, or you can look at percentages, you can make adjustments earlier in the year.
Thank you.
Board Member Kim?
I didn't warn you about this question because it just came to me. I know that it said that there were no criminal I know that it said that there were no criminal, there was no, nothing criminal, and so obviously there's no criminal charges. Are there any civil avenues that we are allowed to explore due to the gross negligence?
I would not be the expert on that question. So, there's civil avenues, are you, can you clarify, are you saying things that the district can seek to pursue, or things that could be pursued against us?
Things that we could pursue, a civil action to, against those who may have had gross negligence.
So, what, what you're asking is, would require me to provide legal advice, which I'm happy to do in a closed session, as opposed to a public session. But I will say that there are some things that are currently under review right now for potential recourse, if any would be available. We're exploring those options. Thank you.
Board Member Crowley?
Superintendent, you made reference to the bonuses that were given out during the COVID period, which would have been when Chair Kaplan and I were on the board. And I, I want it to be very, made very clear that that board made a conscious decision to award the people who worked for us and stayed with us. We got over $250 million in COVID funds, and it was very intentional that we, we saw other districts using that money to lure employees to them. They were giving out recruiting bonuses, and we made a conscious decision that our people were more important, and we wanted those bonuses to go to our employees. The second part is about the budget to actual reports. I think it also should be known that the system that generates these reports dates back to the 1980s, and that these reports had to be manually compiled. Hence, we did not get them. That, that is part of what, I'm not, I'm not trying to give excuses, but that is partly what led to us getting bad information, or an absence of information, in order to make the right decisions for this district.
Thank you. Board Member Watts? Excuse me. Board Member Barr?
You know what? Definitely one of our issues, Superintendent, has been the allotment issues. Can you communicate to us, from the organization, from the central office perspective, what is that process like? And how do we make sure that this does not occur again?
So, a lot of our school-based positions are, are allotments from the Department of Public Instruction. The allotments are based on student counts of some sort. AIG funds, based on a max of 4% for AIG-identified students. EC funds, based on a max of 13%, EC-identified students. Classroom teachers are based on the overall enrollment in the district. Assistant principals, based on the overall enrollment in the district. So, our allotments, our positions, come from the state. And some allotments come in positions, and some allotments come in funding. So, positions, an example for positions would be teachers. We have a state allotment for X number of teachers that we get based on our enrollment. We also have teachers that are paid from local funds. Once again, the state in no category is providing sufficient funds for what is the need. So, the local teachers are paid on, based, we, we calculate how much it costs us in dollars for local. But for state-funded positions, it doesn't matter how much that teacher costs, the state pays for everything for that teacher position if we've gotten it. So all of our most expensive teachers are paid on state dollars, because they pay for everything. And then teachers who cost, cost us less are on local, because it'll cost us less in local to pay those teachers. So, some funds are received as dollars, and some funds are received as positions. For the funds that are received from the state, based on any kind of student count, and the biggest one really is the ADM at the beginning of the school year, because child, the child count happens, that happens based on a December one headcount, and some other things. But, but the, the ADM for our classroom teachers that happens after day 10 of the school year, we will know, we already know what the formulas are that the state has. We already know the formulas that we use. Our formulas are more generous than what the state has. So we will know after day 10, based on the enrollment in our schools, how many positions the state will give us, and how many positions we can afford on local. We then reconcile. If a school earns positions, an elementary school is earning a fourth or fifth grade position based on every 25 students, they earn a teacher, because that's the formula. If their fourth and fifth grade counts come in, and they've lost 25 students across those two grade levels, they would lose a teacher position that was allocated in the spring based on their projected enrollment. If a school has 50 more students than what they projected at the high school, then that high school may gain two additional, additional teacher positions from what was allotted in the spring based on their projected enrollment. That reconciliation process should happen every single year in every single school district. You level-set your resources with what you get from the state based on what's happening with student counts in schools. In Winston-Salem Forsyth County schools, for a number of years, that process has not happened. There has been no reconciliation. So even as we were losing students, the number of teachers either stayed the same or went up. So, that, that is the finding that is in the auditor's report. So what we will be doing in September is we will have a reconciliation, and we will look at student counts in schools, positions that are earned based on those student counts, and see if there is a difference in the student, the resources that were provided in the spring based on projected enrollment. So, it, that happens here at the district level. It would include principals, area superintendents, human resources would all be a part of that process.
Okay. I, I think you're answering my question. I guess I just want to make it clear, from the central office perspective, and I think I asked this question committee meeting, you know what, who touches that allotment final paper? You know, I assume it would be, once it's going through this process with the formula, the state, the local, who touches that, that, that paper and says, is, I, I assume it would be the, the superintendent, to the CFO, to HR, to the executive cabinet, everyone looking at, you know, "These are the allotments we have. We cannot, we cannot give school X any more allotments. We can't give central office any more allotments." Does that make sense? So the, the organi, how does the organization fit in all of that?
It, we have to, we have to reconcile the resources at the point of allocation. So, there, any school resource that, that needs to be returned or gained, you have to involve the principal in that process. It doesn't, doesn't require that I do anything with it other than know what's happening. But it does require that there's a collaboration with human resources, with the area superintendent, and with the, the principal for, for school-based allotments. There's not, we will report our day 10 count. And I, and I don't, I don't guess we've done this before, but we can report based on our day 10 count, what that impact is by grade level in our schools. We can certainly report that, because we will know that. And so, there's, there's absolutely no reason that, that, that can't, or shouldn't be public. And while that is, while that is about reconciling available resources based on our student counts, I think that you also have to take a look at sometime, and this is why you have to involve the principal, and you have to involve the area superintendent as well, there are restrictions on some things that we do, like K3 class size. We have some requirements around that. You know, if, if there is a situation where the elimination, for example, of a fourth or fifth grade-type teacher results in, in uneven spread of children across fourth or fifth grade, you have to make a decision about whether or not it's best to have a combo four or five class, or allocate an additional resource beyond formula. If you allocate an additional resource beyond formula, it has to be a one-year allocation for that year only, that is pulled back in the spring, and you redo the numbers again based on projected enrollment for the next year in the spring. But the, that kind of example that I just gave you is why you have to have the conversations with the folks in the school about what makes sense.
Yeah. And I think I understand what you're saying. I guess what I'm trying to identify and identify for our community at large, since allotment was a major issue, where did things break down?
We, we just didn't reconcile. We did not ask schools to look at their student counts, to look at the number of teachers they earned. No one said to a school, "You're down 25 kids."
Yeah, that's, yeah.
And no one said, "You've gained 50 kids." You know, if a school gains students, they're gonna call somebody and say, "I need another teacher."
Right.
But if, if you have dropped in enrollment, and no one's asking you to return anything or do anything about that, and, and you just keep it year over year.
Yeah. And, and in closing this, I just think we need to be clear as a board, you know what, who is that, that person that, or persons that did not communicate to the schools, "Hey, let's stop. Let's stop our spending, let's stop hiring." But I, I got you.
Well, it, I mean, resources, resources will be added and resources will be removed based on the reconciliation. And, and, and that is, and it has to be the principal, the area superintendent, and HR that do that together. Now, anytime a teacher, if there's a teacher position that a school doesn't earn, then HR has the process to find vacancies in other places in the district where that teacher could go, because we have an obligation, because they're under contract.
Board Member Watts?
So, Mr. Barr, I want to also ask some little clarification, if I may, to what you're asking. A lot of times, that conversation takes place between the principal, area superintendent of his school, or her school, and HR. So at some point, the reconciliation will be, for me, "Mr. Watts, you are down over grade six, eight, you're down 25 students. That's equaling a .2 teacher in quote, sixth grade, a .2 in seventh grade, a ." And then as a principal, we have to figure out how to best meet that need of how to reduce that position. Do I quote, "Collapse a class"? Do I try to rearrange numbers to make it work? But ultimately, those decisions are made with the principal, HR, and typically the area superintendent.
Right.
And then, then if I need to add, I'm, I'm going to definitely call and say, "Look, I got 25 more students in my building. Please look at my numbers. I need to add a .2, .3 here." Then how do I get that? They may give me the .2, .3, then as a principal, I gotta decide how to best make it work for the particular grade level.
Yeah. I got you. Thank you.
But that was not my, that was the clarification. So my, my question becomes, there have been a lot of, well, several people who've emailed us with some creative solutions about how to generate funds to support our district. And my question is, how do we, who do we have them to go to, to say, "Hey, let's start this particular fundraiser, let's start this drive, let's start this way of raising funds to help us end this deficit"? How does that begin? Because a lot of people want to donate money, they want to talk to their employers, they want to talk to other people, say, "How can we do that?" I know, again, at the school level, it was garnered through the principal, but at the district level, who's in charge, or who do I direct them to, to help us raise these funds from private individuals?
So, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna address my lens on that question, and my answer will be around how to pay back the, the vendors and the deficit that we have from last year that we just talked about in the audit report. So the, the 46 million number that needs to change, I, I, we have, I have talked to several folks in the community already, several organizations in the community. There is an active effort underway to provide every school with a set amount of funds around, perhaps like an, an Amazon wishlist, or something along those lines, that every school would have, that an organization would set an amount and request that people donate directly in order to clear that wishlist for every school. And, and that is a timely thing, because schools received 50% of their supply budget in August. The other 50% is supposed to be released later in the year, but it does have that comma caveat, if funds are available. And then, and then there is another, there are a couple of other folks that have spoken to me about larger-scale efforts, large amounts, and how they could use donations that were given in larger amounts to support the district. I, I think the one thing that's very clear in the folks that I have spoken with is, there's not really a desire to help us pay our debts, but there is a desire to help students with needs that the district might not be able to fund. You know, one organization asked me, "Did we, did we want, did we need, or maybe, could they raise funds to maybe purchase some Chromebooks for schools?" Absolutely, we need that. Doesn't help me with the budget deficit, because I have nothing budgeted for Chromebooks this year. So, it doesn't replace something that I have in my budget, it's just something that we know we need. So, the conversations are ongoing, there are, there are people seeking ways and to, to try to help. I think the, the community will see some things, but I think the, that when you start seeing these, these efforts out there, I think understanding clearly whether that effort actually helps us with paying any debt last year is, is maybe or maybe not. And it is not likely to, to have anything to do with the budget deficit we're facing this year.
If someone comes to me and says, "Mr. Watts, I want to donate $10,000. I want to create a drive to create $20,000. Who do I direct them to, and how do we organize that particular drive?"
So, so, the district is not organizing that type of an effort. We have community groups, and I, I, I can't out them.
Right.
But I can tell you who's talking to me, so, all right. I need them to announce whatever they're doing, because I don't know exactly what they're gonna be doing.
Board Member Kane?
I wanted to circle back on a couple of things. One, the, the ADM, could that have been masked because a principal said, "Hey, we did lose some ADM, but we have some SRR dollars, and I really like this teacher, so I want to keep them." It's more, that could have been some of what it was, and not just a principal just not reconciling. Is that possible?
So, there has been no reconciliation.
Oh, okay.
There's been no reconciliation.
I was trying to help, sorry.
But, but it is, it is certainly possible, maybe even likely, that the availability of all of those federal funds allowed us to keep folks on payroll that we otherwise wouldn't have funds for. But I, I, I don't have intimate knowledge of that. But it was not uncommon in districts across this country for recurring needs to be placed on temporary federal dollars.
Right.
That happened all over the country. The key really was the plan for eliminating and reducing that, or, or getting the money for it, once the federal temporary dollars were no longer available.
Going back to the bonuses, I know that you mentioned with the audits doing kind of a chart.
Yeah.
Could, and it may be helpful for the public, to have maybe a chart that said, because I just did a quick math, and in the one that you showed, it was $25 million. So maybe, just as a reminder, that this is how the bonuses played out, just as a helpful piece. And then, SUNPAC, is that set up through the state? Because I feel like until this happened, I had never heard of SUNPAC.
It, it is, it is, it is through the state.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. And then, lastly, something that I would love to discuss is coming up with or shoring up a whistleblower policy. I have gotten lots of calls and emails and things with people that may have had really good information, but did not feel protected in our current structure to blow the whistle.
Okay.
And I would love to have us, as a board, discuss, discuss that.
Vice Chair Bohannon?
The question I had was around the, and I forgot to ask this earlier. So in the, in the presentation, it mentioned in the discussion of finding one and finding two, that at, up to this point, we reduced 400 and that up to this point, we reduced 474 FTEs. Since when?
So that included last spring, when we removed positions for the next year based on reduced enrollment. So like, if we had done nothing, then this September, we would be reconciling for 10 years' worth of not reconciling. So in the spring, they looked at the projected enrollments for schools and right-sized those allocations to schools based on projections for next year. So those positions were reduced late in the spring and weren't given to schools. So schools already had, so their allocation of resources is based on their projected enrollment, not on what they had historically.
So like, the reason why I ask the question is because, and this just might be, you know, yeah, I don't know. So if, when, what year did the state start holding districts harmless? Was that 20, was that 1920, or 2021?
No. So I think this past year.
When did they start?
Or maybe the year before. So I don't know, it's not really a hold harmless, it's funding in arrears, right? Is that what you're talking about? Or you're talking about the hold harmless?
No, I'm talking about holding us harmless via the...
So that was during ESER.
Via the ADM, like...
Yeah, that was during ESER. They knew that because we had remote learning, you couldn't really count students, you know, there were all kinds of issues. They did not dock schools based on lowered enrollment. You kept what you had.
Right.
And then, yeah.
The reason why I'm asking is because whatever year that was, whether it was 1920 or...
It was only one year.
We were only held harmless for one year? It was two?
Three years? Two or three? I can't remember. That pain is regressive.
It came into 23, 24 is when it ended, was the first year.
So if we were held harmless at a time when we have 53,000 students, and now we don't have that, I guess what I struggle to, what I'm struggling with is, when I think about, and I know it's not cut and dry, but if we've reduced 474 positions, and the total amount of positions we have in the district is like 6,000, something like that, does that match with the reduction?
Well, those 474 includes central services positions as well. So that's not just school-based.
Which are not included in the allotments, I guess.
No. Well, there's funding, but not allotments.
Got it. Okay.
Any additional questions? Okay, thank you. Moving to discussion item B, Dr. Paula Wilkins, our chief academic officer.
As Dr. Wilkins comes up, I do want to say something, since it's floating around out there already. I spoke with the board about this as we were coming in. The office of the auditor, Dave Bolick, has sent a letter to the State Board of Education. And in that letter, the state auditor is calling on the State Board of Education to work with the LGC, the Local Government Commission, to exercise their authority under a particular general statute, to jointly hire an audit firm to review the internal control procedures of the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools. So the state auditor is asking the State Board to partner with the LGC, based on statutory authority, based on the results of the auditor's office report, to call for an independent auditor to audit the district. So this, it's just, it'll be another audit, another step. Not sure where the State Board will go with that, or how they will partner with the LGC, or what the determination is, but I just want to put it out there, since it is available publicly, it's been tweeted, or whatever you X, or whatever you call it now. And so it is, we are aware of it, we have seen it, it is about calling for an independent auditor.
Thank you. So Dr. Paula Wilkins will continue the EC service delivery overview that we started at the workshop this morning.
Good evening, members of the board and Superintendent Moore. The goal for today is to provide an update and overview related to exceptional children's services and programming from a federal, state, and a local level. So I'm going to start off with just the foundational principles related to Individuals with Disabilities in Education Act. The goal of this act is to ensure that every child has, with a disability, has a free and appropriate education. We heard that of public education today, that is tailored to their unique needs. And as we think about this, a big portion of that is related to academic support, but it is also about fostering long-term success from a learning, employment, and independent living standpoint. As we think about the IDEA Act, we think about how it empowers families to advocate for their students, as well as ensuring that each child is supported in the least restrictive environment. We also think about how it assists states and agencies in providing special education services, and that will be a part of this update and overview. For the purposes of today, I want to make sure that we kind of just ground ourselves in a few pieces of terminology. We use FAPE quite a bit as we think about services and supports for our students with disabilities. And least restrictive environment, we, of course, use LRE. Also thinking about individualized education, planning and support through IEP, which are individual goals. And then you'll hear me talk a little bit about ChildFON, which requires us to both identify and evaluate all children suspected of a disability, not identified, but suspected of a disability. And then it talks about how we look at personnel qualifications to ensure that our staff are certified, trained, and have content expertise as well. So our state governs much of the support around what we look at and review for supporting our students with disabilities. We are expected to look at how every child receives a sound basic education, which is a part of the Leandro case, in which we talk about quite a bit. And we think about that for students with disabilities, and how we ensure that they are provided an appropriate education from ages three through 21, and can go up until the end of the year that they turn 22, to prepare them for future education, employment, and independent living, as well, as noted before. And I want to note the continuum of placements. For reference, this is the language that is used in the North Carolina policy to state our obligation with regard to the continuum of services. We're expected to serve children based on their needs in the setting that is appropriately going to meet their needs. You will see some of those settings, and I'll show you in just a second, include regular classes, special education classes, special schools, home instruction, hospital, and institutions as well. And we are to make provisions of supplementary supports, such as a resource room, itinerant instruction as well. And so in this continuum, as you see as a graphic, we move from the least restrictive to the most restrictive, based on providing our students with support. And as we think about this full continuum of services, we know that no one-size-fits-all model will support our students. This continuum ensures that each student receives support tailored to their unique strengths and needs as outlined directly in their IEP. The least restrictive to the most restrictive services arrange from full inclusion in general education classrooms with minimal support to specialized settings for students requiring more intensive interventions. The goal is to be flexible and responsive. These placement decisions are dynamic and should be data-driven, and should adjust to students' needs as they grow, develop school skills, and also face new challenges. This continuum is collaborative, and it's a planning process that ensures that the IEP team includes families, educators, and specialists working together to ensure access and progress for our students. This support is across all settings. And so as we think about this continuum, we think about consultative services, which is about providing students with direct accommodations, sometimes directly in the general education classroom, with things such as co-teaching as a support. As we think about resource support, we often call this pull-out instruction, where students are pulled out for a period of time to provide additional supplemental instruction, as well as self-contained classrooms, which, of course, on that continuum, is more restrictive to self-separate schools and programming when needed. So as we look at this continuum from preschool to school age, it's a little different. So when we think about preschool services, we want to look at how do we provide LRE based on students' IEP that is grouped based on their need and not on their disability? That is important to note. For services for three- and four-year-olds for preschool, we want to look at services that could be blended, which is 50% of students that are identified as receiving special education services, and 50% that are typically developing, as well as our developmental day centers and programs, which you see we offer at the Children's Center and Special Children's School. So let's talk about our local continuum of support for school-age services in Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools. You will see that these, this continuum of support looks at the structure that Winston-Salem has had in place to serve our students. This DPI emphasizes that students who are on the standard course of study must be taught with general education peers in a general education environment. As we continue to move forward, we have to ensure that our continuum ensures instruction aligned to each student's needs. We prioritize inclusion, independence, and post-secondary readiness, and placement decisions are data-driven and student-centered. And I will note, one of the things that we talked about, as we think about services and supports, we have several additional services and supports that may not be offered in lots of other districts as a support to our students. And of course, we also offer hospital, homebound, and residential as well. So as we think about EC staffing and service allotments, this funding is strategically leveraged for diverse funding streams to meet students' needs. These mechanisms allow us to respond to high-cost cases and support early intervention, as well as thinking about how we have collaboration with both staff, as well as IEP teams, to ensure that the funding is available for sustainability, and that's something that we're here to talk about today. And I talked about a little bit this morning, this idea of maintenance of effort. So as a district, as a state, we are looked at, how do we maintain effort, which is our investment to support our students with disability? And I mentioned, and I'm happy to share with Superintendent Moore, our year-by-year kind of progress of how, from local, state, that we meet maintenance of effort. There are many categories that we are expected to meet that maintenance of effort each year, and we can share that data with the district. We must meet in one area annually each year. And so I'm going to talk about EC identification and funding for our district. So our local responsibility here in WSFCS means that we provide that specialized instruction and support our 8,500 identified students, ensuring that equity access and dignity in every classroom. This funding alignment, while we serve those 8,500 students, our state funding is provided for approximately 6,500, which is 13% of our total district enrollment. This requires strategic use of our state, federal, and local resources so that we meet our students' needs. This 13% is a cap for state funding. DPI funds at 13% if the percentage is more than 13%. But if it's under that 13%, DPI funds at the lower child count number. So child count is important, as some districts are not at that 13% threshold. So at whatever percentage up to the 13% in the allotment formula, then the district is funded based on that number. And I will say, this actual number of students is more reflective of all the students, that child count number, as I mentioned, is the number of students we're able to count based on completed IEPs during that specific snapshot in time. So you will notice the difference in the numbers, actual versus when it is taken during child count, that is based on completed IEPs at the time. So we're going to think about, how do we continue to align our staffing and think about funds for sustainability, which is the question? And so we talked about unfunded mandates, and so knowing that we are identifying beyond the 13% of our total enrollment, that means that for about 6,605 students, we are allotted funding with our actual number of 8,427. So that's about 1,822 students, and that equates to about $7.5 billion that we are required to provide services, but it is not funded through the state cap. So I want to provide the overview of our vacancies for both teachers and teacher assistants for exceptional childrens. Based on this staffing vacancy that report goes back to 2022, you will see, we've had a pretty good number of staffing vacancies, and that was also shared with the update from our HR division. And we also took that snapshot from the first day of school, which you have those numbers provided as well. So we're going to talk about the NCDPI allotment. So first, I want to address teacher assistants. They're allotted based on group size for students and not total caseload. So here's an example of that. If a teacher has students needing general or targeted support, but has a caseload of 30 students, but groups are no larger than eight students, TAs are not required. So if you look at some of the allotment formulas, there are places, and I'll show you in just a second, with our allotment formulas as a district, where we have allotted TA support, where it has not been required or expected through NCDPI. So here are some additional examples to provide around this DPI caseload and allotment recommendations. So some examples include elementary students who need foundational academic and behavioral support, they're in smaller groups or more targeted settings. For middle school students, who require targeted interventions as academic demands increase and/or social, emotional needs evolve. And for high school students, they get specialized instruction, many of this, much of this is aligned with a graduation pathway, such as occupational courses of study, which includes job preparation and coaching. And so I'm going to transition this to talk about Winston-Salem Forsyth County, and how we have looked at the NCDPI caseload ratios and limits, and how allotments... Oh, Kevin, can you, can I cancel? Okay. Thank you. And how we provided direct allotments and supports using the DPI recommendations and guidance. And so I just want to reiterate, these are guidelines, and they're foundational to quality instruction and student progress. They're not absolutes. Districts use this based on funding available, resources that they have to provide additional support. As we go back to maintenance of effort, and as we look at the number of students identified as receiving EC services, we will always continue to have a local requirement to fund and support our students with disabilities. This is only a discussion around the guidelines specific to NCDPI. So we continue to review those guidelines to provide a level of support based on needed services for our students, meeting requirements of their IEPs, and resources that are available to the district. The staffing has to reflect both compliance and the complexity of student needs. So you can see that that is a process to be able to look at some recommendations, needs, resources. This data helps us align to that state guidance and also serve our student needs. It's a starting point for strategic decisions about staffing and service delivery. It's not an absolute. And so I'm going to give you an example specifically, and then I'll talk a little bit more about the chart. For our speech-language pathologists, DPI has made available a work caseload calculator. This helps to assist in caseload assignments. So you will see in the example for SLPs, DPI's guidance is no less than or equal to no more than 50 students. Our district has looked at either less than or equal to 50 students and no more than 25 service hours. We're looking at a recommendation based on using the NCDPI calculator to increase those service hours to more efficiently use the staff that we currently have to 32. And you will see, for instance, for teacher assistance in K5, DPI recommends no larger than 12 to support targeted or sustained support. And so I just want to note, that is where DPI makes the recommendation for teacher assistance, to no greater than four students for targeted or sustained support, and then no greater than eight students is our recommendation where DPI is at 12. For elementary teachers, the maximum caseload... For elementary teachers, the maximum caseload, 35 students. Our current allotments are no more than 20 students. Recommendation to no more than 25 students still within the DPI allotments. And then you see for middle school, high school, and then our extended content classrooms as well. And so I just want to note that these recommendations reflect both a compliance and a commitment to quality service for our students. That is our ultimate goal. We want to focus on how do we strategically use the funds available and to ensure sustainability and impact. The goal of this is to work, to get even closer to some comparable districts to provide a standard quality of support, as well as to continue to provide early intervention, our related services, ongoing professional development, and ensure that we provide faith in the least restrictive environment. So every adjustment aims to improve our outcomes and to ensure support for our students with disabilities. And so I just want to note a few key takeaways. So our EC services have a goal to be responsive, student-centered, and grounded in best practice. These recommendations ensure every child receives what they need to thrive. And we ask for continued collaboration with staff, with schools, as a need. We know this is a starting point, and we'll need to continue to get feedback from schools to improve how we adjust, think about ratios, what's sustainable, what's next. But I, I also know a part of this was looking at how do we get closer aligned? And that we want to move forward with clarity, confidence, and ensure the best absolute, absolute care and support for our students. Are there questions? And I'd like to invite Dr. Holland to join me at the podium as well.
Okay, Vice Chair Bohannon, and then Board Member Kay.
So Dr. Wilkins, if you can go back to the chart. So the, the, right there.
Okay.
The question I have, so obviously, and I think Superintendent Moore mentioned this earlier, just about allotments in general, that the state funds, you know, the, the state sets these ratios based on, I guess, whatever. Like, it's, it, it's not, it's not what we need. If we went to what the state recommendations are, that would be catastrophic.
We do not think that's the best practice.
Right. So my, my question is, in, in where our ratios are now, did we benchmark ourselves against districts with comparable size to see where their, where their current allotment ratios are?
So I asked Dr. Holland to weigh in on that one.
We, we purposefully tried to lower the ratios for this school year to give teachers an opportunity to have lower caseloads to be able to fulfill all of their responsibilities without, without burden. When we found we were not able to do that, when all of this unfolded, because the original plan was developed back in January and February before all of this became public and, and we knew about the, the financial situation, then we had to change. So it was a purposeful plan to try to lower caseloads.
Okay.
And I want to add one more.
Thank you.
I did call superintendents in other districts and had them pull their caseloads, their allotment formulas, and give me those, so I could see what other districts were doing.
And so where, where, where are we?
Who did I, who did I call?
Who did you call, and where are we by comparison?
Oh, we will be aligned with what other districts are doing. I looked, we were not aligned. We were more generous than what other districts were doing in all cases. And, and the districts that are most close in size to us are Union County and Cumberland County. I did speak with both of those superintendents, and I checked with some other districts as well. Smaller districts that don't have the availability of local funds are closer to those state numbers. And other districts that, even, even though, we would be now, even with larger districts, closer to what even larger districts are doing also. So this, and, and the term, the term is relative standard of support, right? So when you're looking at what other peer districts have, the changes that we're recommending bring us more in line with what other districts, peer districts, similar-sized districts are doing.
And then just one quick follow-up. So are there, do you know, and this might be too specific, but those districts that you spoke with, do they have the same issue where the, they're above the 13% in terms of percentage?
In some cases, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to add one more thing to your question, Board Member Bohannon. I'm trying to find the slide. Where we show what we offer in Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools. Many other districts don't have this full kind of additional support that we may have in certain places for services and supports. And so we allot staffing in many ways, just a little different. Still providing the services for students, that does look different than other districts. I can, I can guarantee that.
Help me, do ECS and OCS students count in ADM? Or do they, are they not counted in ADM?
They're counted in ADM, but for EC services, that specific number is only students with disabilities. As in what we receive funding and a part of child count, that's only students with disabilities, but they are in the total ADM.
Okay.
Board Member Crowell?
That's correct.
Yes, can you tell me the number of EC teachers we have and the number of EC teacher assistants that we have currently?
We can pull that up, and I see Chris put we can give that number.
I think that's an important number to know for this decision tonight.
It's, I can give you an approximate number, and then Dr. Weichert can, can verify the actual number. But it is approximately 350 to 375 teachers, and it is right around 400 to 450 teacher assistants, I believe, at this point. And he can verify and be more exact than I can.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, interim superintendent. Oh, okay.
Chris, were you pulling up exact numbers? Okay.
Okay.
Chair Kaplan, if I may? Sure. Now, this does not include EC pre-K or EC itinerant teachers. All right, so you have 350.4 EC teachers, and that includes your ECS classrooms. And then for teacher assistants, it's 442.
Thank you very much. Any additional questions? Okay, we are moving on to our third discussion item. Our interim superintendent Moore and Dr. Chris Weichert, who is the Chief Human Resource Officer, will discuss the recommendation for reduction in force for 2025, 2026.
Thank you, Chair. And for those watching, we've loaded a revised presentation. So that, you'll be seeing a revised presentation. It is the same with the exception of some additional slides at the end, and, and we'll get to that in just a moment. So this, this is the bulk of the reduction in force recommendation that we are asking the board to approve this evening. We've covered a little bit of this earlier today in workshop. The policy that guides the reduction in force is 4119.3. This particular reduction in force is being based on financial exigency as one of the pillars in the policy for the district. That we have decrease in district revenues, decrease in state allotments, federal carryover is decreased, and the use of fund balance from 2025. So I, I want to say that again, because the, the budget deficit that we are trying to address with the reduction in force recommendation this evening are all things that came to light at the end of June and up till now. These are not things that existed last year. There is a $5 million reduction from DPI in the funds that they told us we were getting, and getting in spring, and then what they actually sent us, and they made a revision, $5 million down. We have $8 million less in federal carryover based on using federal carryover dollars last year for last year's needs beyond what we would normally do. So we have $8 million less in federal funds carryover for this year. And then also, at the last board meeting, I believe in June, the board approved a $5 million fund balance request, it was retroactive, for funds that were already used during 2425 for current operating needs. That $5 million reduction from DPI, the $8 million reduction in federal carryover, and the $5 million from the fund balance all have to be removed from the 25, 26-year budget, or we will not balance. So that, that is where this number's coming from. Prior to making this recommendation, the district has frozen central office hiring. We have also frozen school-based hiring. The Hill consultants that are working with us have been projecting budget shortfalls, not just for, not just from what last year, but part of what they were hired to do in the new contract was to look at our budgets for 2526 and make sure that we were going to provide a balanced budget to the board. I think it's important to say that I am required to provide the board with a balanced budget to adopt this fall. I cannot provide a balanced budget for the board to adopt without making reductions. The recommendation summary includes position elimination in six allotment areas. It also includes reduction in terms of employment to 10 months for seven different position categories. There will be an option to provide that extended employment back beyond the 10 months if funds are available as we get closer to the end of the school year, and that would be for June. Right? Because of the way our calendar works. The furlough for central services is also part of the recommendation this evening. This is, all staff at central services, excluding bus drivers, EC itinerant teachers, speech-language pathologists, physical therapists, and occupational therapists. The district office position eliminations from central administration, which is program level, manager level, and up. District licensed staff, these are teacher license, and district non-instructional support staff. The totals, the total anticipated savings there is 3.2 million, 50 positions, some are already vacant. In all cases, you see at the bottom of the slide, and just I want to highlight this, that the cost savings that we've projected are 85% of the salaries, because folks have already started work. And it also reflects that the district will be obligated to pay the district portion of COBRA insurance for up to a year. So we've already accounted for those things in the savings that we have identified. The position elimination for assistant principals includes 36 assistant principals and then nine assistant principals from trade-in. And just to make a point of clarification, this does not mean that the nine assistant principals who were trade-in are being RIFed. It means that those positions now go in into the overall count of positions that are being considered. And we have two vacancies right now. Up to 43 employees would be impacted. The savings anticipated there is 3.5. Non-instructional support, school-based. This is the testing coordinators, one vacancy. There are 37.75. Some of these positions have already been traded in by principals. And now they're, this recommendation would mean they would not be at any schools. Office support staff, which includes bilingual office support staff, reducing the middle school max allotment to two and a half for at the high schools, combining some roles. This would impact 52 folks. The total savings anticipated here would be just over 1.7 million. The position elimination in exceptional children's programs includes EC teachers. It is important to note that this excludes the extended course standards teachers and OCS teachers. Those are, those formulas, those allotments ratios haven't changed. The positions eliminated here, 61.9. And for EC teacher assistants, it is 97. You see the number of vacancies that we have there already. The potential employees impacted here would be 100 across both groups. The savings identified here would be around $6.3 million. A couple of words about what the reduction in form terms of employment is. So these are the groups that would be reduced to 10 months with the potential for extended employment should funds be available for June. That would include assistant principals, district instructional coaches and instructional support leads, EC facilitators, transition coordinators, and EC-related staff at central services, CTE instructional support staff at central services, instruction facilitators at central services, athletic directors in schools, psychologists, diagnosticians, second secretaries in schools, 12-month high school counselors in schools, 10-month, 19-day middle school counselors in schools, and other district classified staff who have extended terms of employment. The savings here is anticipated to be around a little over $1.5 million. The central services furlough recommendation, these, this is a tiered recommendation. So a furlough, we were, we would be requiring the staff at central services to take days without pay. Employees whose gross annual salary exceeds $100,000, the total number of days that would be furloughed in this recommendation is 12. Employees who are between $60,000 and $99,999, the total number of days would be eight. And employees whose gross annual salary is less than $59,999 would be five. The savings, including the benefits cost here, is also just over $1.5 million. This is a summary table that shows all of the recommendations from the prior slides. It comes to 18.275 overall. I do want, I do need to make a note that in this recommendation, the furlough amount of 1.5 million, those are one-time dollars unless you furlough every year, or fine dollars to replace that. And I, and when I put together the amounts that have gotten us here, the $5 million reduction from DPI, the $8 million in federal carryover, and the $5 million from the fund balance, that adds up to $18 million. That's the minimum reduction that we need to make. 1.5 of that is one-year funds. But because these recommendations don't capture a full-year salary at 85%, I'm comfortable with 1.5 million of the dollars not necessarily being recurring at this point. Next slide, please. The timeline that, that we, we got to this this morning. We will start, depending on the board action this evening, right away with notifying employees. It will, we'll start next week, notifying employees. We have to run some protocols and lists in order to, before we begin that. They will receive a notification that they have a meeting scheduled, that they are part of the, the reduction in force group. The day of that meeting, we, the employee will not report to work. It will be placed on other paid leave for that day. The employee meetings will be held at a building that does not have any other Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools things going on that day. There is a letter that needs to be administered to each employee when they come in. We will have some support onsite, School Health Alliance, for some, for emotional support as might be needed. And HR team members will also be onsite to answer questions about benefits that folks might have. There are information packets that we're working on for staff as well. The board asked, I think the last time when we talked about it, what could, what are some of the things that we could give employees that might help them with how to contact other districts that may have vacancies and that sort of thing? So we'll be providing information there. Next slide.
Order, order, please, in the room.
By the end of next week, any employees that are in an impacted position group who are not identified in the RIF will also be identified via email. And any employees who have a change in terms of employment or impacted by a furlough will be receiving electronic communication as well. In September, after we have done our day counts in schools, ADM positions will be reconciled in schools. And if there are any ADM teachers that need to be placed or employee, then we can look at employees that are impacted by the reduction in force. And if there are positions available, we would, we could look at that then. And that would follow the protocols that we have in place based on service to the district and certification for vacancies that are open. and certification for vacancies that are open. September 12th is scheduled to be the last day for employees who are impacted by the So there is one piece of the reduction in force that is actually into next year because of the timing of when this happens. So in fiscal year 2027, 26 program managers and directors in central office, in instructional services, and student services will be reduced to 10-month, 19-days of employment. It's just a timing issue based on the fact that they've already started in July. And so it's a delayed implementation, and the cost savings there is $252,000 for next year. So the recommendation is that the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools administration requests approval to implement a reduction in force, the reduction in force policy that will eliminate a total of 343.65 positions impacting between 268 and 275 employees, reduce the terms of employment for 288.94 positions for fiscal year '26, and 26 positions for the fiscal year '27, and the tiered furlough plan. That is the recommendation that we are bringing forth to the board this evening. Now, before I move on, we had a work session this morning, and there were some questions this morning in the work session about particularly, could we look at and was the scenario accurate that we might have an assistant principal, for example, who had been with the district for multiple years, who might be a part of the RIF protocol? If we, they would not have an opportunity because our school-based positions are frozen and there are not positions in schools to go into a school-based position. And at the same time, we would have folks in school-based positions that were there on emergency licenses that might not have a degree in the area they were teaching, that have come in through an alternative licensure program, and some concern about there not being a way to address that. So staff went back and looked at options, and we have a proposal B that addresses that concern that came up earlier today. This was based on feedback from the board workshop, and we did consult with legal. This is a second proposal for employees. A little bit, some differences from the first one. The overall number of positions being reduced would remain the same. However, the 51 licensed administrators and district instructional staff, these are the APs and district staff that are certified, would be demoted to a reduction in force 10-month position in a licensed teacher role for an area in which they are licensed or eligible for provisional licensure. So there would be an option for those individuals. The rationale in our RIF policy behind that is that this is an organizational consideration to ensure that all of our classrooms have a fully licensed certified teacher. So because of this shift with reduction in force, that demotion for fully licensed staff into positions that are being reduced. So the following personnel reduction in force end of employment would then go with this. 33.9 EC teachers who are alternatively licensed, 51 alternatively licensed teachers to be determined based on certification, and then you have the 183.75 classified employees who are not licensed in central services. These are some slight changes that would then look to RIF alternatively licensed teachers that are in our classrooms that would then create space for the licensed folks who would be part of the RIF protocol. So in proposal B, there is a change in the savings that we need to point out. If we implemented this RIF as is proposed in B, the fully licensed staff into positions currently held by alternatively licensed teachers, the estimated savings would decrease from the 18.2 by around $1 million to 17.2. And the reason that that is reduced is because those individuals who are licensed and have experience in the district, at APs or at central services, have a higher salary than the folks who are coming in that are alternatively licensed that are at the beginning of our teacher pay scale. So there is about a million-dollar difference in the savings. However, we are not making any changes or changing anything else in the proposal because, as was pointed out by a board member also in the work session, we did not include the savings from making the dental insurance premium change as a part of the 18.2. So even if we drop to 17.2 and we include the million or so that we'll get from the dental insurance change, we still will reach the 18.2 that we were looking at earlier. The employee dental transitions, if that happens in January, nothing happens until January. So the proposal B recommendation then becomes, "The Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools administration requests approval to implement a reduction in force policy that will do the following: eliminate a total of 343.65 positions, demote through reduction in force 51 licensed administrators or district licensed employees, end employment through reduction of force between 265 and 275 employees, reduce the terms of employment for 288.94 positions for fiscal year '26, and 26 positions for fiscal year '27, and implement the tiered furlough plan presented." Happy to take questions.
Yes, Board Member Watts?
So if this plan is implemented, where will we be in June 26, and how's this set us up for '26, '27 year?
So first, the implementation of this plan will allow to bring forth a balanced budget for '25, '26. Cannot bring a balanced budget forward without making the reductions. As we implement the budget for '25, '26, and we engage in the monthly budget to actuals and we're tracking our expenditures against our resources, and we see where we're headed for the year, you should be able to see whether or not anything else needs to be touched in the spring. These reductions are designed to get us to a balanced budget. But if for some reason something is happening and we're seeing that there's still a budget deficit, we would need to address that. More than likely, though, I mean, I think this will get us to where we need to be with the budget for '25, '26, and these are permanent reductions unless we identify reductions in other places or ask for and get additional funds. And that would be my next piece. I cannot say, would not say, that any of the reductions that are being proposed are what we want to do or what we expect. We're sitting in this bucket because we didn't reconcile in previous years, and things like a $5 million reduction in Title I carryover, which does go to last year, but the $5 million reduction in the state is about not having prepared and living within the resources that we had available. I posit we need all of the folks that we're talking about here. But until we have either the funds from the county or the state, or go back and make reductions in other places, we can't afford it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay?
Order, please, order.
And we are 85% people and benefits. About 85 to more than 80% of our folks are actually in schools. So we have to take a look at what our formulas are. We have to take a look at the relative standard of support for other districts. But I do think that in the long run, we have to ask for what we need, whether it is from the legislature or the local county commissioners, in order to achieve the level of service that we want for our students. Couple of other things that I think it's important to say, and then I'll turn back to questions. So these reductions in terms of balancing our budget, I need to make it clear that we will begin running a budget deficit as soon as September, definitely by October. And we will not be able to pay our bills and pay our people as early as the end of September, definitely by the end of October. We must make the reductions or begin making the choice next month on whether we pay our bills or pay our people. We're going to protect the people, so again, we won't be paying our bills. That will start again. And I just, I have to provide that clarity to this reduction because it's reality. I mean, I've run the numbers on what our local appropriation is for the county and what our fixed bills are. Our largest expense on the local dollar is personnel.
Yes, Board Member Kim.
Okay, so I'm going to, you said what I was hoping that you would say, and I want you to, I'm going to reiterate it. I want you to reiterate it. If we decided tonight, we didn't, we were going to listen, and we reject the RIF, you are saying that we will likely not be able to pay our bills by September, but definitely by October. Is that what?
That is correct.
Okay. Now, let's play another little game of pretend for our community.
Please, order.
I don't know what's wrong with the mic. I'll stick my mouth in it, sorry. Okay, we'll play another game of play pretend.
Let's play pretend we do what everybody wants, and we completely eliminate central office. There's no more central office. It's just gone.
There's at least 10 million more to go.
Thank you.
Yes, Board Member Miller?
Yeah. So I'm not opposed to this RIF plan in that I know it's necessary, but the way that it exists right now, I don't think that I can support it.
Order, please, order, order.
I've listened and I've heard the outcry from our community. My problem are the EC reductions. I think they are too, they're too severe. And this is what I'm wondering, because again, I'm not opposed to a RIF plan, you have to understand that, but could we phase in these reductions over time and maybe find another source of revenue to get us there? I'm extremely concerned about the impact that these EC cuts are going to have on our students, and I really want us to be able to look at some other options.
I can appreciate that. There are two, I mentioned them earlier today, there are two other sources of revenue that we have available to us to consider. The first one is ADM, which is classroom teachers, and I've explained that I don't think we need to do that until after we get after to the reconciliation process so that, and we've already made a lot of reductions there last spring in preparation for this school year. That would require going to the classroom for additional people. And then the other large bucket of money that we have that is local, that we have full flexibility with, are the local supplements that we pay teachers, the local supplements we pay principals, the local supplements we pay assistant principals, and the local longevity that we pay classified staff. And I did not bring that forth as part of the recommendation, but it is either ADM or the local supplements where there are additional dollars.
So would that bring us to the same place that these reductions would bring us?
Well, the total local supplement, like the total, so here we go. The amount we pay out in local teacher supplements is about 25 million, and that is, I'm not counting Article 46 because we can't touch Article 46. It has to stay for the purpose for which it is intended. So this is outside of Article 46. About 25 million for local teacher, the principals is 3.6 million, APs are 2.8 million, the local longevity for classified is 2 million. So that total is around 33 or 34 million. If you reduced the supplements by half, then you would get close to where we need to get. I do, okay.
Okay. Order, please.
I, again, it is, it is, it is an option. I do know that there's been a lot of work done in this community to bring the supplements to a competitive place, and goals that have been set around where you want to be, giving the classified staff a local longevity, I'm not sure what other district does that. All admirable. I do think that in looking at the reductions that have been proposed, looking at what state recommended ratios are, and looking at what peer districts are doing and still providing the level of support that is required, drove this recommendation versus reducing salaries across the district. But I am answering your question.
But could, if we went this way, could we phase it in? Or does it have to be like all?
If you phase it in, you don't garner the savings of the full salary, so you don't, you still can't achieve the balanced budget.
Yeah, I was thinking we'd have to bring in another source of revenue to do that.
Vice Chair Bob Hannah?
So I have a couple of questions. The first is, in the frequently asked questions document that you released, I believe it was last week, that the number, if I'm remembering correctly, was that we needed to save a total, I think it was like 19-point something to 25-something. And these proposed revisions, these proposed reductions are, of course, 18. What shifted in terms of where we were, like in terms of the need?
Right, so a couple of things shifted. In running the numbers around what we would need to do with exceptional children's services in particular, that's the reduction that was proposed at 9 to 11 that came down to the number that you see now, 6.3 maybe. And then the assistant principals, due to some efficiencies in ensuring that schools had a level of support, came down some as well.
Okay, and so we talked a lot about the kind of EC allotments by comparison to the state, but I was kind of curious about APs in terms of how many APs the state allot us. Just if we didn't pay for APs with any other funding source, how many APs would we have?
So the state allotts administrative months of employment for school-based administration. So every school gets a 12-month principal that comes out of the allotment from the state. It's months of employment that they send. Once you take the principals out, what's left is for assistant principals. And that's about 51 assistant principals, and they may be making some changes and bringing that down, but somewhere in the vicinity of 50, and 50 10-month assistant principals. Those allotments are predicated upon, so it's really 500 MOE, right? 500 MOE is what you have for assistant principals. We have been allocating 1,559. So that's the amount of assistant principal commitment that we have been allocating. This will bring us, it won't reduce it by half, but we'll still double the state allocation. And again, I just want to caveat that by saying the state does not provide everything that is needed.
Okay, so the other question I have was around the central office, because I think we've kind of heard that as a reoccurring theme. So if I'm remembering correctly, the, you know, like when you kind of made the decision or staff was looking at the positions or the amount of central office, did we look at how much the state pays for for central office positions versus what we spend on top of that? Do you have those numbers?
In all of those cases, we looked at what allocation we get from the state, what we spend in the district, and then those were also points of comparison with other districts as well, because we know the state doesn't give us everything that we need. In the, I need to find it. In the, I need to find it. The, in central office, the state provides us 1.9 million. The district provides an additional 12 million in local, some, in local. In, in non-instructional support, and this is mixed state, and this is mixed schools and central services, the state provides 16.8. We spend 49.6. And then in school-based admin, I just talked about that one, the state would give us about an additional 500 months for APs, and we are doing 1,559.
And, and so how do we, we looked at the relative standard of support?
So we looked at relative standard of support, looked at other districts, and I said, how much do you provide in district support, local support, to, to meet your needs in addition to the state? And in all cases, we are allotting and providing positions at a higher level than our peer districts are. And in all cases, and even with these reductions, we'll get closer, but we're still providing a higher level of support in all three areas.
Okay.
The, the APs might get the closest.
Okay, last question. So in terms of, based on what I hear you saying, the longer we delay in making a decision regarding the reductions, the, the less savings we will ultimately have relative to these positions? So if, if we, because, because, and I think, is that sort of the, is that sort of the reason why the, the recommendation was sort of put forth without, you know, staff input or, you know, a process where we ask staff kind of what the preferences were?
So I think it's, we did the work to understand where we were from state funds versus local funds. We did the work to find out what our peer districts and folks were doing in other areas. If, if I had six months, we would do this differently. Do not have six months. We need to bring a balanced budget to the board, and we can't do it unless we make some reductions. And the, the RIF protocol is, is a legal process too, so, you know, the extent to which we discuss options around what we might do are likely to run afoul of the RIF policy. So that is why staff takes and makes recommendations.
Yes, Board Member Kane.
Back to the furloughs, can you bring that?
Back to the furloughs, can you bring that up?
I don't know why, I wouldn't. There was one, somewhere that it said with the exception of?
Yes.
That's what I'm looking for. Basically, I, I'm concerned.
It's under the, yeah.
Are we saying that our maintenance staff and our cafeteria staff, like those guys, if they happen to fall in that range?
Yeah, so not cafeteria, that's a separate entity, but yes, maintenance. These are, the, yeah, yes.
Any other questions? Yes, Board Member Barr.
Superintendent Moore, you mentioned something about the classified longevity. What is the total amount of that?
2 million.
2 million.
Board Member Brown Gaither.
I think we're not, this is going to, supposed to be the second year of that. Is that correct? Second full year.
Yes, Board Member Brown Gaither.
I was trying to write down, I'm sorry to answer. Let me ask you a question. Of the central office staff, how much of their money is on the local dollars?
That's hard to, that's hard to, that's hard to, that's hard to figure out, because I think we, do we not put the most expensive people on the state funds?
If you don't state.
Yeah. In order to maximize the local dollars, you would put the, the most expensive people on the state funds. And, but I don't know if there are caps on any of those. I think there might be caps. Like, I know there's a cap on the superintendent. No matter how big the district is, the state will only pay X amount of dollars for the superintendent. And then the rest has to be local. So, um, most superintendents are funded duly, state and local. But you put your most expensive people on state, regardless of category.
I'd like to also suggest that the Board of Education go from 12 months to 10 months with our stipends.
Chair Kaplan.
Yes, Board Member Crowley?
Can you tell us what the furloughs equal as far as what the, a pay cut is from a percentage standpoint for the central services?
I didn't run it as a percentage.
I mean, we've had a lot of people clamoring for pay cuts, and I'm just trying to figure out what the furlough, what, what that ends up being as a pay cut for people.
Go ahead, Chris.
Upper end will be like, right about 1.9%. And how I did that is took five divided by 260. The higher end is just around, somewhere between four and 5%. I forgot the decimal walking. I did that earlier today. So it's somewhere between, in the middle one will be in between. So the way you do it is the days divided by 260 days, because that's how many days are in the 12-month year.
So the highest earners will take about a 5% pay cut?
Yeah, it's four point something, I don't, I don't, I don't believe it rounds to five, because, but it's in that area.
Thank you.
Yes, Board Member Watts.
Not a question, but still a concern that I proposed earlier today. With the amount of positions that are being proposed, is there any way we can extend this timeline, if not by at least two weeks more, just to make sure that we get it right and the employees are identified correctly? And the reason why I said, I know we're also limited in capacity in our HR area, and you talk about all these meetings off-site and all these things, I just, my, my, my heart hurts, so we got to do this, but if we have to do this, we need to make sure it's done right with compassion, with empathy, and giving all support we can to our employees. And I just don't feel like September 12th, we can make it happen.
So I think my, I agree in terms of how we need to do this. Change, the, the timeline and the requirements have been considered in setting that September 12th, so it isn't, we can get all of those things done by September 12th. Delaying means we delay the implementation, and, and I would really, I'd need an understanding of, if, and the board would need to come to some sort of consensus on, on what it is that's different that you want to see. Because again, it is either supplements or ADM in order to get this kind of funding. And, and, and the delay is a bigger, is a, is just a bigger hole.
Well, my follow-up is, we, when we had the quote "summer situations," we heard from a lot of people that it was, felt very cold, it felt very short, it was last minute, and I'm just wanting to make sure that if we're going to do this, we avoid those pitfalls again, with, especially with the larger numbers that we're talking about. And I, I, I respect what Dr. Walker is saying, but I also know that when we're dealing with people, sometimes it's going to take more than 10 minutes per meeting, or 15 minutes per meeting, to deal with the anxiety, the pain, and all that comes with being rift.
Any other questions?
You know what? When, I think someone mentioned something about the supplement being reduced, I think the audience clapped, if that's going to save 300 to 350 jobs. So just want to ask you this, you know, is there an appetite, or do we, Chair, how do we, how do we discuss this concerning the supplement and the classified longevity?
Chair.
So, any comment, so first of all, if we're going to, if the appetite for the board is that we pause, I think first and foremost, we need to ask, if, if we're going to not go with the RIF this evening, and we are going to table that, if, if, if a majority of people want to do that, we need to be able to give marching orders to the superintendent about what we need, so that we can come back with a, with an actual proposal and it's not kind of lingering out there, because what I'm concerned about is, is us not being able to pay our bills and not being able to make payroll. So if, number one, if, if it, if it's tabled tonight, we need to ask people what they want. So we need to ask people what their preferences are, because we'll have more time. So we need to ask people if the three options are to go with this RIF, to utilize the supplement, we need to, or ADM, people need to be able to, I don't know, weigh in about that in some way. But the other thing that worries me about the supplement is that our county commission, over time, has allocated resources to the board so that we can increase our supplements locally. If we make a decision as a board to decrease those supplements, when we have been asking the county commission over years to increase those supplements, what does that do in terms of the county commission's desire or effort to continue to increase those supplements? So I think there has to be a conversation also that includes what the county commission's appetite is for that type of move, because what I don't want to do is that we make a decision to decrease supplements, and then longer term, that impacts the county commission's desire to continue to allocate resources to increase supplements. Because when we first did the cordyceps sales tax increase, that was to try to make us competitive, but then because of what all other districts are doing, we're back down to where we were before the cordyceps sales tax was put in place in terms of supplements. So, I mean, I, I, I think there's a, there, yeah, there, there's a lot more to think about than just to, just do it.
And you know what, I, you know what, I, I do agree that we need to, I do agree that we need to look at it and think about it from those perspectives, but when we talk about, and once again, I can, I'm, I'm just throwing out the pros, the cons, just, just as a board discussion. When we think about, and I'm going to try to say this respectfully, whatever, but when we think about the county commissioners' perspective of the financial mess that we're in, I, I just think their, their, their perspective of where we are now is, is pretty bad. So looking at the supplement, I don't think that's going to change their perspective. That's just a, just a fault.
Any other comments? Yes, Board Member Crowley?
One thing I want to clarify. So the way I understand it is that July 1, the clock started on us adding to our deficit because we're not in a balanced situation. So time is of the essence, because despite what a board member said, that, oh, every day we wait, that's less money we save, it's actually further money we're going into the hole.
Yeah, and that, I mean, it is, it is correct, that if we wait, the risk on vendors, the debt we have increases. I think that, and, and then you having to do more because you also have less time, so.
Yes, Board Member Brown Gaither.
I guess I want to just say this. For the hundreds of emails that I did answer, no, I didn't answer all of them, because it got to be really out of control. But for the hundreds I did answer, you know, I said, please, you know, go to your legislators, because I can tell you now, and I've been to the last two or three county commissioners' meetings, they have no appetite to assist us. Now, unless something's going to change from last Thursday to now, they have absolutely no appetite to help us. And in fact, one commissioner said they will be back asking for money if we give it to them this time, mark my words, and was, and voted it down. We haven't seen much from the legislators to kind of help us, and I'm not going to say they're not. I'm just saying thus far, we have been following, we have been doing everything that the legislators tell us to do, everything that the county commissioners tell us to do. One group tells us to go to the other group, the other group tells us to go that. We've been doing it, we've been playing that the entire time, and we're, I'm telling you all, we are in a hard place now. I don't think it's anybody sitting up here who wants to cut staff. Nobody wants to do that. Unfortunately, we're just digging ourselves deeper and deeper, and nobody is coming to our assistance. Now, some of you all can sit out there and say it's your fault. This started eight years ago. It has been multiplied. We can only do what is given to us as a board. So when we ask questions, and it is answered, and it says, yes, we have the money, we are not going to go in there and sit on somebody's lap and look at the actual, we trust that you are giving us the correct information. That's what we have to go on. So for you all to sit there and say, and I'm sorry, I'm on my, I'm so sorry, I have to apologize, but for you to say that all of you all are sitting on there and you're not doing your job, to our ability, we are doing our job. But I'm telling you, people are sending us from one place to the other, and it's, you know, you all say, we, you all must think we make a whole lot of money, because I hate to tell you this. Okay, I am speaking of the school board only. That's all I can speak on. We don't make that kind of money, believe me. I came from industry as an engineer to teach for 19 years. My salary was cut by a fi, down three, four fifths from what I was making, but it's something I wanted to do. Guys, and all of you all as teachers know, you don't make enough money, and you're putting in a lot of hours. I feel like I'm back teaching. I'm putting in more hours now than probably I did as a teacher. And I was at school every night to 8:00 PM, regardless of what school I taught at. Right now, we're putting in, usually we have August off. We have not had any time off, and you all can say that's your fault. No, we're trying to deal with what has been given, and we're trying to deal with what has been given to us, the same as what has been given to you guys. Again, we don't want to make any of the cuts, but we can't keep going further in the hole. And I've even heard that the commissioner says they don't believe we're going to do anything anyway, because we don't have the guts to do it. Come on now, what does that say about the commissioners about us? I'm sorry.
Oh, thank you.
If I could, if I could bring us to the, the Proposal B recommendation, and I, and I do want to say that staff recommends going with Proposal B,
Okay.
the one that creates position options for the licensed staff.
Okay.
And I, and I just want to read it again. The recommendation, Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools Administration requests approval to implement a reduction in force policy that will do the following. It's a very, last slide, next one. Eliminate a total of 343.65 positions, demote through reduction in force 51 licensed administrators or district licensed employees, end employment through reduction of force between 268 and 275 employees, reduce the terms of employment for 288.94 positions for fiscal year '26, and 26 positions for fiscal year '27, and implement a tiered furlough plan presented. And then, you know, before the board does its thing, I just close again by saying, you know, this is hard, this is not what anybody wants to do. It is, there are plenty of fingers to go around. But in my role as your interim superintendent, before I came and now that I am here, ensuring that you have a balanced budget and bringing you the best recommendation to do that, i- is what we've attempted to do this evening. I, I will say that I, you know, permanent reductions in salary supplements would not be something that I would bring unless the board tells me to. So, so this is, this is our proposal, and if there are any additional questions, happy to answer them. to answer them.
Any additional ones? Okay. We, thank you. We are going to move on to action items. We have three items to consider tonight. First, consider approval of the reduction in force Proposal B recommendations. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
So I have a motion by Board Member Watts, I have a second by Board Member Wood. Any additional comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor. Opposed? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Let's, let's do this vote again. All in favor of the proposal. Opposed? The motion passes six to three. Before I read the second action item, I am recusing myself from the vote to hire the superintendent search firm based on the Conflict of Interest General Statute fourteen dash two-three-four-point-three, which prohibits, which prohibits officials from participating in the making, hello, uh, excuse me. We are conducting a meeting, I need order. If you are leaving, please be quiet as you are escorting the building so we can continue our business. So I am recusing myself due to the conflict of interest of General Statute fourteen dash two-three-four-point-three, which prohibits public officials from participating in the making or administrating of a contract with any nonprofit of which the public official is associated. I currently serve on the executive board of the North Carolina School Board Association. So the second action item is consider approval of the superintendent's search firm briefed at the August twelfth, twenty-twenty-five Board of Education meeting and the August nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five board workshop. Do I have a motion for a superintendent search firm?
I'd like to motion Summit Search Firm as the search firm.
Second.
So I have a motion for Summit Search Firm by Board Member Coon, I have a second by Board Member Watts. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Okay. Opposed? And I, and one recusal, so motion passes five to three. Consider approval of the FY twenty-six budget amendment and transfer number one briefed at the August twelfth, twenty-twenty-five Board of Education meeting. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion by Board Member Watts, I have a second by Board Member Crowley. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Thank you, that passes unanimously. August twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-five will be our next regular meeting of the Board of Education. This concludes our public comment period, I mean, this concludes our, our board meeting. And before we adjourn, I want to remind the public not to approach the dais after the meeting ends, and if you need to speak with a board member or the superintendent, please wait for them to come into the auditorium. You can also email any board member or the superintendent if you have a concern. Thanks for being with us. Do I have a motion to adjourn? So I have a motion and a second, all in favor. We are adjourned.